First rate.
Melissa Miller. Hi, I'm Melissa Miller, 550 Old Oaks Road. Two minutes is quick, so I'm going to go super fast. I sat through this meeting the last time and I listened to all the scenarios, including four, three, five, whatever, and I heard the board all say we're not going to accept scenario four, then we're going to go back to SLAM and we really want to hear what a 4B can look like. It would be a traditional redistricting with an entire town involved. We are going to move a lot of kids. We are going to think about this as a long-term solution. We are really going to look at making this equitable, sustainable, and an imbalance, looking at the imbalance for a long-term solution. We talked about maintaining neighborhoods as well. So after about a month, I looked at this yesterday and I nearly cried. I was about utter loss of reward and so sad. We basically got back a worse scenario than 4A. My district, my actual house is in a satellite now, so I got the map and I could show you guys later, but the entire Brookline neighborhood has been circled as a satellite, which I heard this board also say that they were completely against in last versions that I listened to. New scenario, looking back at seven years, doesn't even solve the problem we're looking to solve. McKinley was still either be in balance or within a few percentage points of being in balance, which to me makes zero sense at all to be even doing this. What I'm asking you to listen to tonight, I guess, is to please stop using like the least impact that we keep, like we get, the new scenario, this least impact that I keep hearing about. It seems to be the only thing that matters. Like, none of these things are actually looking at long-term solutions for our children in this district. If we're going to do something like this, I ask that you please grandfather everyone that is currently in this school. And let's, let's draw maps that actually make some sense. That's how we're going to minimize impact. We're going to just grandfather everybody. We're going to figure out a plan that works for this town and then we can start fresh. Please do not sacrifice about 200 kids that are being impacted at all of these maps just so that we can get the state off our back and then be back here again in two years. Please do not consider any kind of satellites or any kind of scenario 4A, 4C, 4C. And I just want to ask, please just to consider magnet schools.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Promise and I live at 287 Ronald Drive. I'm going to read a letter that was sent today. Most of you have probably read it and some of you have responded from the community in the Jennings Woods area affected by scenario 4B. There's 17 kids being moved from Jennings to McKinley and to Tomlinson. So, you know, right off the bat, we oppose this because it does not meet the objective of solving for sustainable racial balance and cannot comply with the racial balance law. On page 15 rates the plan as fair slash poor. The entire goal of the redistricting is to solve this issue. It admits its fails on its own merits and for that reason alone should not be considered. Walker impacts are reported as good on slide 15, but this is simply not the case. By moving children from Jennings to McKinley, our kids will not be able to walk to school as there's no safe route and it's obvious this proposal was created by a group who's never walked our neighborhood. Also, walking further distance on Burrows and crossing it multiple times is not safe, especially for children due to the unregulated speeding. We currently have a paved option on Coral Street manned with a crossing guard to get safely to our schools. Black Rock Turnpike is not a safe walking route as well. There's an uptick in pedestrian motor vehicle accidents and fatalities in this town and a safety report in 2019 shows that the intersection of Black Rock and Burrows has a high and severe crash location and no improvements have been made to this area. And then by busing our Tomlinson, our kids to Tomlinson instead of walking to Woods, our kids will now spend a good portion of their day on the bus. Taxpayers' money will be used to bus students who previously could walk safely to school, which would also impact the elementary kids because I don't think we can walk under three quarters of a mile to McKinley. And we're creating isolation for these middle schoolers, which is an extreme move and only a few kids with no familiar classmates will be asked to go. And then finally, as we've discussed before, our middle-aged schooled children benefit from walking. It's safer, it's good exercise, and it's important for their mental health. So in conclusion, to pocket redistrict 17 kids switching from walkers to bussers doesn't solve any of the problems we're trying to fix. And I'd like to say thank you on behalf of the DeSefano, Fernandez, Harrigan, Hall, Levy, Majewski, Pastilli, Promise, Rajan, Rennelli, Sullivan, and Travis families.
Is that the button? Okay. Hi, my name is Dr. Jennifer Doran. I'm here as a parent and as a clinical psychologist. I am so sorry for the job that you all have to do because no one knows better than a psychologist how hard it is to change, right? And I support, I understand that we need to redistrict. Obviously, I understand why. I appreciate that we're doing it. And you guys are in a tough position, so thank you for the work that you're doing. I want to talk about how redistricting is going to impact my family, not because it's about my family or the fact that I think we're unique, but because I think it's not unique, right? I think this applies to the kids who are being redistricted. I don't need to tell you or anybody how hard it has been for our younger kids, right? Going through COVID and the pandemic, the mental health impacts. We are in a mental health crisis. We're seeing that in our schools. My son is in kindergarten and there were a ton of behavioral issues in his class and the other classes last year, right? We know this is going on. So, my kid is a Holland Hill student and would be moved to a new school with a very small number of kids, meaning likely no one he knows, no one in his grade level that we know of, right? No one in his class, so would be moving alone. Not only would have to adjust in the middle of elementary school to a new school, but would lose access to all of his extracurricular activities. The half a block difference that redistricts us changes our baseball league, for example, that my husband coaches in, that my son plays in, that, you know, if he's going to lose his friends at school, at least he has his friends at baseball. So that would also be gone. He loves the aftercare program in Holland Hill. He went to the ECC summer camp. He knows people there. He's comfortable there. So not only is he losing school and his friends and making that big transition, but he's losing the sports and the teams that he's comfortable with where dad's a coach. He loses the aftercare and the summer camp that he's so comfortable with and familiar with, right? And he's doing it alone. No other friends, no one else in his grade. I say this because I think families having the choice to finish out their school, I have a younger son too. I'm fine with him starting in a new school. No issues at all. He can be redistricted. He can go to Sherman, He'll start.
Sorry, it's your time. Can you just name your address, too?
I'm so sorry. 2160 Kings Highway. And my main point was just that I think grandfathering is really important for kids already in the school. Thank you.
If you hit the button on the bottom of the microphone, please. There you go. Just your name and address for the record thing. Good?
Melissa Sullivan, 86 Ronald Drive, Fairfield, Connecticut. First, I objected us being limited to two minutes on a very important topic. That being said, I'll be brief with my time. I reiterate all of the points raised ahead of us. I urge you to take a closer look at the quality of the information you're getting in these presentations. I find that the conclusions about walkability have absolutely no support to them. We really need facts behind some of these conclusions and real facts behind some of these characterizations that are being put in front of you because you have real important decisions to make. I don't know how much you've paid for these presentations, but they're not very substantive, first of all. Second of all, the issue of walkability, which has been addressed, was characterized as good, far from good for all of the reasons already expressed. The social-emotional issues that you're talking about with cherry picking a very few number of children, moving them outside of their classmates to fill a need that the town has that hasn't been addressed for decades, doesn't seem to be a viable option. I agree with the point that all students should be grandfathered in and we really need to be looking at a bigger solution, whether it includes magnet schools or some other solution that takes children with their cohorts throughout the whole progress of the school. I will also want to note that I don't know if there is information about the lack of information about, are we really solving a problem that we're trying to address? I don't know if this study actually looks at the racial demographics of any of the kids being moved into McKinley. Does that really solve a problem or not? That's a question for this group. I don't have the answers to that. You know, that's really the substance of the problem you have ahead of you and I would hope that this group is actually looking at those details. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Greg Bosch. I live at 470 Jackman. I just want to acknowledge today is the first day of school. It's not a secret, but this theme of taking on this very important topic and doing it right before the Christmas holiday, on the last day of school last year, and now on the first day of school this year. I should be home chatting with my kids tonight about their first day at school and instead I'm here and I'm limited to two minutes. So this is what I want to say. You know, much of last year was consumed by this conversation of closing Dwight and then we find out that we can't even get scenario four to fit at last Board of Ed meeting if we kept all of our buildings open. We've heard for years that the ECC needs a single site and that its planning needs to be strategic and taken care of in a thoughtful way. We faced challenges as a district because some of our 11 elementary schools are over-enrolled, over-attended, where others are underutilized. And finally, of course, as we all know, we've been tagged by the state as a racially imbalanced school system. The problem is not limited to McKinley, but it is all of our schools. And this plan to move around 200 students is to what end? To be back here in a few years? I don't know the answer to that, but neither do any of us. And so I'm here tonight to ask, what problem are you actually trying to solve? Because 4B seems to not solve any of these problems. Back in April, members of the public might want to look this up, Toni Jones, the superintendent of Greenwich, spoke to her school district about some of the strategies that they're deploying in Greenwich. She was a former superintendent of this school district. And I would suggest that they are using all of the letters of the law in what they are trying to do to develop a racially balanced district.
Thank you. Sorry, time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right, moving on to our first presentation, SLAM. We'll present the new redistricting scenario. Mr. Zuba? Alvin? Yeah. There is, yes. The button on the microphone and hold it the whole time that you.
Sorry, see it. Hillary Buds, 436 Warner Hill Road, Southport. I would like to express my frustration and overall disagree, sorry, with the continued failure to limit redistricting efforts to the actual issue at hand, which is racial imbalance across our elementary schools. The current updated 4B scenario continues to create unnecessary collateral damage by moving over 10% of Mill Hill School District, School's student body, drawing almost exclusively from its local walker population to a school several miles away. I'm concerned that the board is still willing to shuffle children around to meet the secondary goals around capacity and utilization that are simply not required. Based on the board's past two decades of population projections, being significantly erroneous, it's also a move that won't even solve a capacity distribution. I continue to not understand and feel extremely frustrated and saddened and honestly have a hard time even comprehending how someone like my son who walks to school could potentially be moved and put on a bus miles away. We purchased our home three years ago due to the fact of the value it would hold being so close to Mill Hill. We also purchased it given knowing that it makes our lives a bit easier, given we are two working parents commuting and traveling most of the week. It was a critical, critical decision for us as a family when we purchased our home. Had we known we would maybe be moved miles away, we would have not purchased there. I ask that you severely reconsider moving such a small, local walker community to a school that may be miles away.
Sydney Sullivan, 1213 Merritt Street. Redistricting is a problem that is derived from a very purposeful lack of housing variety in the wealthier areas of Fairfield. That leads to forced population density in specific parts of town, which leads to imbalance in our schools. This problem did not originate at McKinley. This problem originated in the wealthy and exclusive areas. They are specifically, and I believe purposely, left out of every solution that has been proposed. This is a cause and effect solution at the most basic level. For this reason, redistricting is a town-wide issue and the burden should be shared equally. You will never have lasting racial balance if you continue to only shift the lower-income areas amongst themselves. Done that way, it's a math problem with no solution. My takeaway from the July meeting was for 4B to represent a town-wide, traditional redistricting solution with lines shifted throughout the town in order to move the needle where it needs to be. I thought we asked for an appropriate amount of kids to move together so there would be familiar faces in the movement. I thought it would keep neighborhoods contiguous. 4B stretches the definition of a contiguous line. It's a thinly veiled satellite zone. It is not what we asked for. SLAM is fooling no one by saying that a student who lives near Pepe's is in the contiguous Stratfield neighborhood. My other frustration is that 4B is just another iteration of option five that already exists. We asked for and paid for an extended version of four and that is not what we got. For some reason, SLAM is focused on minimal disruption, even when we clearly and specifically didn't ask for it. 4B should have been, should have eliminated that as a factor to see what other scenarios could exist. This is holding them back from ever giving us a long-term solution. They continue to shuffle the same pockets of kids around and continue to say it won't work. They are doing the same thing over and over and over, expecting a different outcome.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. All right, moving on to presentations. SLAM, new redistricting scenario. Mr. Zuba and Mr. Gallagher, welcome. I believe is Mr. Gallagher on Zoom tonight? Virtual? Is he?
Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to present scenario 4B. Pat Gallagher is joining us virtually. Hopefully Meg can unmute him, but I'll be going through the presentation and then available to take any kind of Q and A as follow-up. So. What just happened? There we go. So with scenario 4B, it involves several moves of programs. Under this scenario, the ECC program will be located at Jennings and Holland Hill. The size of that program will be four ECC classrooms plus one full-size ECC support classroom, giving it a total of five classrooms at each of those buildings. Therefore, we deducted those five classrooms from the overall capacity of Jennings and Holland Hill. We had to go through the process of shifting students out of Jennings and Holland Hill in order to be able to accommodate ECC at those locations. CLC has also moved from Jennings to Dwight. The ELA program shifts from McKinley to Burr. And then our charge was to make all schools compliant with the state racial balance law of less than 25% and to minimize disruption elsewhere. Looking at the bigger picture and sort of the finding and constraints, having gone through another redistricting scenario, just based on the demographics and we're looking at seven years of enrollment data, address match with student characteristics, the traditional redistricting process is unable to achieve that sustainable, less than 20% as we've defined it, for all schools within the elementary school district-wide average, unless we shift McKinley students to at least two other schools or we go through, which I know is not popular, the use of satellite zoning just based on where the students historically reside. We cannot achieve racial balance by only moving McKinley students alone. Becomes a push in a pull where one push has an unintended consequence. Additional students also need to be shifted into McKinley from neighboring attendance zones. The areas of McKinley that borders Stratfield have the lowest share of minority students in McKinley. This means that a larger number of students must be impacted in order to meet racial balance objectives using a traditional redistricting approach. And what I've done was just to provide a couple different planning block maps that look at the 22, 23 data, but this is very similar to all the historic enrollment that we've compiled over the last several years. So when we look at the K5 district-wide minority percentage of 26.7, based on the 22, 23 enrollment reported to the state, a 25% deviation would then put us at no school can exceed 51.7% minority students. What we see on the map is that when we begin looking across the board at each of these census block groups that have the enrollment data assigned to them, we could see we have areas that are highly concentrated with a lot of minority students and we have areas that don't have so many. When we further zoom in and we look at the McKinley, Stratfield, Holland Hill, Jennings area in particular, as I'm showing on this next slide, we can really see that as we try to keep contiguous boundaries and we go through the process of a traditional redistricting. When we look at a neighboring area of Stratfield that has a minority percentage that's in the 20s, 28, 21%, even higher than that, 30%, and then shown in the mustard color, the McKinley attended zone, the neighboring areas have a minority percentage of about 40, 43, 47%. We're being asked to do a redistricting between areas that do not have a large dissimilarity in racial composition. When you begin looking to the more southern area of the McKinley attended zone, that's where you see where we have higher concentrations, where the minority percentage of the student body there is around 70, high 60s percent. Historically, this goes up as high as 75%. That creates a very big challenge in that no matter what we move along those boundaries to create contiguous boundaries while trying to meet the utilization objectives, the walkability objectives, the objectives for the feeder pattern, the middle school, the high school, it's very, very difficult because we have no control over where the students live, where they have lived for years, and trying to redistrict that through cohesive boundaries is proving to be very difficult. This is a look at 4B. What it does is we've identified several areas along the borders that I just described. So the tip of that, and I wish the, oop, there it is. So right along that McKinley-Stratford interface there, shown along the Stratfield, yes, Stratfield. I apologize. It's been a long day. Yes, same. We've looked at trying to keep the planning blocks or the movement as large as we can. So I understand that we have some blocks of 17 students. Historically, that can go as high as 20. We looked at being able to try to move larger peer groups where possible, but ultimately, we looked at this as the modification to four where Jennings to McKinley moves about 17 students. And this is based on 22, 23 enrollment, so it's not exact right now. Stratfield to McKinley, about 40 students. McKinley to Stratfield, just under 100 students there. Then we have Holland Hill to Roger Sherman, 24 students, and then Mill Hill to Dwight, 40 students. Overall, we're looking at about 8% of elementary students impacted as part of this. 34% for McKinley, 15% for Stratfield, and 15% for Mill Hill. This is what the districts would look like without the areas of change. So these are the areas of change. This is what it looks like without it. This is what the overall utilization looks like. So overall, this includes the program shifts that I described. This also increases the ECC 210. I've highlighted it. In red below, that's the four full-size classrooms plus one full-size classroom as a support. This lowers the total number of instructional grade-level rooms at Jennings to 13, which puts it at about a two-section-per-grade school. This does not dramatically change the overall utilization district-wide. However, we do have some schools that are higher utilized and we do have some schools that are lower utilized under this scenario. The band of that is about 10%, especially as we get further out in the enrollment projections. What it looks like from a racial balance standpoint, it did not perform as well as some of the other scenarios. McKinley would have deviated from the district-wide average, averaging 23.3%, with a range of about 22 to 25, with that 25-year occurring in 2021. So it's, could have been impacted by COVID. But overall, in that band from 22 to 25 overall, Holland Hill, when we did the historic seven-year look back, would have been in balance in three of the seven years, ranging from 12 to 16% deviation from the district-wide average. All the other schools are in compliance. When we looked at the projected utilization going forward, noting that in 31, 32, the district-wide average would be at about 94%. That's when you see many of the schools above that mark shown in the, shown in the red color. But overall, utilization was one of the parameters and we were able to get the schools banded at plus or minus 10% of the district-wide average over the next five years. This is just the projected enrollment, looking at the enrollment change, accounting for the demographics, as well as accounting for the housing that's coming online in each of those redefined attendant zones. It maintains, scenario 4B maintains the current feeder pattern based on the modified elementary boundaries. The redistricting impacts for the middle school students is about 2% overall, where we do have these two small pockets, seven students, 16 students that would go through a redistricting at the middle school level. And then no changes to the high school boundaries or feeder pattern. With the projected enrollment, it does shift some students out of Fairfield Woods to Roger Ludlow. Cohort sizes range from 250 to 300 at Fairfield Woods, 230 to 270 at Roger Ludlow, and 180 to 210 at Tomlinson. Overall considerations maintains an 11-school alignment with the contiguous attendant zones. McKinley would have deviated from the district-wide average by 23%. We've rated this as fair to poor from the racial balance standpoint because we weren't able to get near that 20% mark that we saw as being sustainable. Holland Hill also remains in that impending category. Somewhat balanced utilization within the first five years and that gap does shrink as some of the housing comes online. About 8% of the elementary students would be redistricted in this scenario and 2% of middle schoolers would be redistricted and about 2% of the elementary walkers would be impacted. I did add one additional slide as we had a little more time on Monday. Once we got the agenda package out, we identified a smaller area with Once we got the agenda package out, we identified a smaller area within Holland Hill on the northern portion of the McKinley boundary that would reduce the racial imbalance at McKinley by about 1%. So getting that overall imbalance to that 22 or so mark, but that would require shifting 25 to 30 students from the northern portion to Holland Hill. Another suggestion from the consultant, and these are simply from the consultant after we've had some time to look at it, requires moving ECC from Holland Hill to another facility. If it works facility-wise, either North Stratfield or Dwight, this could potentially reduce the racial imbalance at McKinley to about 20%. However, it would increase the racial imbalance to Holland Hill to about 20%. It would have a greater overall redistricting impact to McKinley, and there would be additional students shifted out of the ECC location. And last but not least, considering that we are stretching some contiguous boundaries, that if there were some satellite zoning, that could minimize the overall impact as well as be able to achieve that district-wide average of 20% for racial imbalance of all the schools. With that, I'll turn it over to the board if there's any questions.
And I might ask if it would be possible, we don't have that last slide in our packet. Is there any way that we could get a printout of that possibly? Thank you so much, Dr. Parrish. Okay, thank you very much. I will open it up to the board.
Thank you, Mike. In looking over this, obviously in advance of the meeting, you touched on a couple things, but obviously the numbers skewed worse in my mind for what we were looking for, especially with imbalance, and you've covered that. But I guess one of the questions I have to start off tonight is, and I just, bear with me, I wrote it so I ask correctly, I hope I wrote it right here. But I'm wondering if you could tell us if and what the constraints that you feel are on you doing this work, especially including 4B, but in general, so that I think not only the board, but the layperson can understand what are, if there are, roadblocks? And also, are those coming from our charge? So for example, you've heard the public comment tonight, you've heard from board members, this idea of minimal disruption, and where is it coming from? And looking at the charge, sorry, I left it over here. In the guidance, 1, 2, 3 is the fifth bullet point, it says, "It is preferable that students living within the board's walking distance guidelines be districted as walkers." And that's one of your matrix characteristics. And I'm just curious, that and anything else you can shed light on, is there anything the board can be doing to unhandcuff you so that if we all, is it possible to look at a traditional redistricting scenario if our charge were different, or if the parameters were different from the board, to achieve better results?
It's a good question. I don't believe it's just the charge alone. I think there's a lot of layers to the challenges, to be honest with you. Some of them include just the locations of your school facilities of where they're at. You also have a lot of different densities in housing, and that creates some challenges in that the demographics are completely different in different areas. I can go back to the map, and I think that map is very important if Meg is still behind the curtain back there. If we could just look at this, that district-wide map, when we're trying to achieve racial balance and we're trying to create a plan while still trying to keep cohesive districts, and Meg, if you could just make that a little larger? Or fullscreen maybe? Very good. You could see the areas in darkest green, those are the drivers for the imbalance just in McKinley School. So as we look to be able to address that imbalance and we try to be able to have a logical movement of students, when we don't have room to say the south and southwest, so as we're looking at schools like... Did you have a hand up? Approach is very limited. So where we're trying to create space to move students, we don't really have a lot of space, say, at Mill Hill, which is very well utilized. The school itself is right-sized to the enrollment, but also we're handcuffed with trying to have a movement of students, say, from the east to the west or to the southwest, just because Osborne Hill, Jennings, Riverfield do not have capacity. So we're trying to utilize capacity where we have it, but we're also trying to be respectful of those walking boundaries. So we're limited, when you look at what the walk shed for a typical school is, we're limited to that area outside of that walk shed, and we need that walk shed to also be in agreement demographically with what we're trying to do. We also have layered on top of that a very complicated feeder pattern from elementary to middle and the middle to high school that we're trying to be able to maintain that historic feeder pattern while moving students, while utilizing what available capacity we have. And with adding in ECC classrooms as part of it, we're limited in the facilities themselves of where we could add ECC classrooms based on the ground floor requirements of those classrooms. So we just keep kind of layering on all these small constraints that end up in some larger constraints when you try to get into the process. To try to go through a very comprehensive redistricting, we've showed that in several of the options. There aren't a lot of major deviations from what we've looked at from, say, the original four or original five, based on some of that redistricting, if we really want to shake things up comprehensively. But what we're looking for is some further guidance from the board based on a consensus of what are the outcomes that you really want? Because what we're seeing is that when we're able to achieve one area, we fall short in another area. So it's almost like we're trying to address four or five long-term things in one plan versus creating a plan for what the most immediate need is and doing it in a manner that doesn't hamstring any further advancement or any further programmatic changes that you may be doing, and that may include ECC expansion. It just created where we're really limited on what we could do, and we keep putting out options. And obviously, a lot of folks do not agree with the options, but it's not that we have a ton of options to be able to run to achieve all of those goals. So even in a simple redistricting of where we only have a clear charge, there's always going to be involuntary movement of students. There's always going to be one or two elementary schools that has a greater number of students moved than another. I've done 60 or 70 redistricting plans, and I've never seen one where the expectation may be, you know, each school, you know, redistrict 15% of the students. It's just, it's impossible. So I think where we're coming at it from is we want to know what that most, what is the most desired outcome that you want to be able to accomplish as part of this process? And we want to have a single voice directing the consultants so that we know it's a board consensus of what we're taking on and what we're working on, because we feel like there's just a lot of different goals by different members, and we're unsure of what our next step should really be.
So what I'm hearing from that is ideally tonight, you would like a direction from the board of what is it we want to solve, because it's clear that we're not going to be able to perfectly solve everything?
Yes, because if you want sustainable racial imbalance of 20% or less, the traditional redistricting just doesn't work with the buildings that you have, where you have space, and where you have ground floor classrooms to be able to put ECC together. So when we begin looking at these things, it's almost like we need to be able to dig deeper into one area, and that area should be an approach, like what is the preferred approach? And then we could tell you what the flexibility or what you can likely accomplish within that approach, rather than just trying different approaches over and over and expecting a better result than what we've already presented.
All right. So from our July meeting, the consensus of the board and the will of the board was that the approach to follow was that of the philosophy of scenario four. And it was deemed 4B, and that's what we asked. So is it safe to say that the philosophy of four is not achievable for the 20% or only if we take some of the other components out?
We think 4B can get to 22% if we include that small area that I mentioned of 25 to 30 students, shifting them from basically Holland Hill to McKinley. In our direction from 4B, it was only to move certain areas, and with from that, we didn't include that in there. But we also think that the ECC, if it's phased in, could possibly present some greater opportunity to get it maybe a little bit lower, but we don't think that you could truly hit 20 or below from a traditional redistricting.
Sorry, Mr. Ace, I have a follow-up clarification. Sorry, Mr. Zuba, you said that your direction was only to move students from certain areas in a 4B, but we didn't give that direction. Where did that direction come from?
It was my understanding from that we were to move certain areas that, from the conversations that I had.
Okay. Mrs. Max and Kelly, do you have a follow-up to my follow-up? Because Mr. Ace still has the floor.
I do, but I would, because of the list of comments I have, I will wait for the whole thing for Mr. Ace to finish.
Okay, thank you.
I'll yield the floor at this point. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Max and Kelly then.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. I appreciate the work. That said, 4B is a non-starter for me. So, but in terms of the idea of the handcuffing, and to piggyback on Mr. Ace's point, I hear the two areas where we as a board have handcuffed you. And one is the fact, and this is a comment we've heard a lot from the public, and I have always defended the direction of the board, which is the fact that we are doing three, four, or five things at once. And my defense of that charge to you, which I know has made your job infinitely more difficult and challenging, but my attitude has always been, we're doing this once. And as complicated as it might be with the specialized programming, balancing the utilization, and addressing racial imbalance, that we need to do it once because we're not going to do this, that is the kind of thing you can't phase. That was always my belief, and I always defended, and I recognize that that is something we did to the company to handcuff you, and that the specialized programming especially made this difficult. And that's kind of the, I hear that point. However, the rest of it, and I'm not sure where, if there was a communication lapse, but it otherwise appears more that you've handicapped, handicuffed, handcuffed, excuse me, yourself to a certain degree. And I just want to point out a series of comments where I was making note while you spoke, in no particular order. For example, you referenced maintaining the feeder pattern. That was never part of our direction to you. On page, it's on page three of this, there's the phrase, "Unless McKinley students are shifted to at least two other schools." We never said not to. And I know that in past times, working with your company, there have been plans that involved different aspects of TANA, and so that's another area where that was not in the direction of the board. The idea that we can't comply unless we both shift students out of McKinley and into, I always assumed that was a given. There's the phrase, "The areas of McKinley that border Stratfield have the lowest share of minority students." No direction from this board said to focus on the Stratfield-MKinley border. I don't understand why that maintains the focus. You also asked, "We are being asked," that was a quote, "we are being asked to do this" in terms of that Stratfield-MKinley connection. And if that were the solution, I would understand it. But it is clear that it is the southern part of McKinley where a traditional redistricting would achieve racial balance in a more sustainable fashion. And, but I completely respect your point. This is going to involve, if this were some type of clockwise shift, you're shifting students into buildings that are more, that are already at utilization, and it's going to be a bigger shift. But I've, again, going back to the July meeting, I thought the will of the board was a townwide redistricting. So those appear to mean to be areas where you're more handcuffing yourself and going, and again, it may be that that's more of the, what's it called, the system with other towns of redistricting, and I respect that that aspect of experience, but it's not what we've asked for. And I could not agree more that I don't personally want to even see on a rubric least disruptive. I just, it's, I don't want to see that point anymore.
I just want to help Mike out on this one. I think with the Stratfield, the McKinley to Stratfield, that was partly in our conversations because we were taking the ECC out, because it's been determined not to be an ideal location for a number of reasons, that kids would go in. So I think to that point there, the Stratfield-MKinley thing, movement back and forth is because of taking the ECC out, it creates space there.
And that's why, I completely understand that, and that's what I know, that's kind of the subtext of the specialized programming that isn't as high-profile. So I definitely understand that, but we also have the ELA, you know, the Early Literacy Academy, that's three classrooms right there. And we've lots of, again, I fully recognize that that makes this much more complicated, but I still say that some of the phrasing that is used in this is simply not the will of this board.
I didn't say it was all the will of the board. I was answering Nick's question about some of the board's charge, and then I added my own personal experience. And then I did not say everything was the will of the board. I'm talking about what's happening in this process and some of the things that we can't control and you can't control. So if I'm able to respond, when we move the four, when we move the four ECC classrooms out of Stratfield, that created four classrooms of space. It's my understanding that the current space at Stratfield isn't the best suited for the ECC. So that's why the freeing up of space was the movement of the students into Stratfield. If we had free space in any other direction to be able to utilize, we would have been able to do that. And we decided to move the ELA to Burr in order to better increase the overall utilization there, because Burr wasn't impacted as part of the redistricting process. So, you know, there's a lot to be able to unpack that's very complicated and things that have moved around. But the combination of moving programs as a moving part, and then moving students as a moving part, and that creates different options that ultimately still don't get to the crux of the problem, which are trying to be able to balance based on where you have space.
And we're trying, sorry.
While still adhering to walkability, which I've heard tonight, while still adhering to ensuring that we have utilization that's balanced across the different schools, we simply don't have space in that direction of where the greatest concentration of minority students are. And we've shown option after option where you can do this clockwise motion of students that ultimately gets you somewhere, but we're moving a lot of small blocks of students, which we heard, and maybe I misinterpreted, wasn't favorable when you're moving smaller peer groups. So we went away from showing a lot of more comprehensive redistricting and comprehensive movement of students because we had a lot of smaller peer groups in all of our earlier redistricting options. And the reason we have smaller peer groups is not because we want to move smaller peer groups, obviously we don't. We do not have the space to move larger peer groups into the buildings. So where we don't have space to move larger peer groups, we're trying to accomplish the goals of the board by moving smaller peer groups, which is obviously unfavorable. So to that end, it's not just what the board's charge was, it's trying to go through this process itself, and the parameters of the community are hamstringing it a bit.
And I guess my follow-up to that would be, I'm very glad that you're here tonight. I think that there was some miscommunication coming out of what our interest was in that July meeting. I think this was a, and I appreciate hearing your explanation so we understand how 4B came about. And I think this board is going to need to clarify very explicitly, and again, I'm just one voice, but I'm certainly willing tonight to communicate far more explicitly what I'm interested in seeing from here if we continue this route of the traditional redistricting. Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, sorry, Mrs. Kelly.
Hi. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for this. I don't want to repeat everything that Ms. Max and Kelly said, but I agree that I was also under the impression that after the July meeting, I thought that we had kind of gotten away from the charge and said, when we wanted a 4B, we wanted, I thought we were going to see something much more like a traditional redistricting that was moving much larger groups of people. I think a lot of us made it clear that we did not like the concept of satellite redistricting and the concept of moving seven people here, seven people there. And I believe Mrs. Gerber had used the term like, just moving these few people around the horn, doing that. And I get it, that's not, that's not okay. Larger groups, is it more of an impact? Does it check off the minimal impact box? Absolutely not. But that's the scenario that I thought that we were going to be getting. Again, maybe there was a communication problem, but I'm just saying that that's what I thought we were getting. And in my opinion, I could, 4B is a non-starter for me as well, like Ms. Max and Kelly said. It needs to be a shared equally across the district. That's what a traditional redistricting in my mind is. I'm confused when you say that there's no space in these buildings, we can't move children into these buildings. I'm oversimplifying. I know your job is very difficult, but in my, in my mind, to me, if you move a section in, then unfortunately, a section has to move out. And it is a game of around the horn. And it sounds very insensitive to say it that way, but it's effective. And in my opinion, the more children you move together, the more likely you are to have it be, yes, on paper, it's impactful, more impactful, but I think, so 4B is a non-starter for me. I don't know where everybody else is.
Just to clarify, I'm not moving a section of students, I'm moving a street or a block and.
No, but I think we can be moving a whole section.
But they don't fit neatly into one section of an empty classroom. So the demographics of that neighborhood changes over time. So as I look at neighborhoods and I look at the composition, I'm trying to be able to fit that neighborhood composition into an existing school without creating an additional need for another classroom. And that's why you see small movements of smaller cohorts, because you don't have three, four, two empty classrooms where we can move a large block of 50 students in, and that we know that will be resilient, because that neighborhood block, the demographics will change from year to year, but ultimately, that school will be able to absorb all of those students with confidence over that 10-year period. So when, when I say there's not space, we have a few seats here, seats there, seats there, while maintaining our class-sized guidelines. So when we're moving 17 students, 20 students, 12 students, seven students, we're doing so with the mindset of, we know how much capacity are in these buildings, and we can't move 40 students. Because if I take 40 students out of one school and put them into this school, I may have to take 30 students out of that school and put them into the other school around the horn, and it doesn't work. And I'm telling you, as your consultant who's done this 60 or 70 times, that they have been adopted, this does not work.
Excuse me, to the members of the public, please, if you could just not disrupt our speaker and the board's turning to its business, please, thank you. Sorry, sorry, Mr. Zuba, I didn't mean to interrupt. But did you want to finish your thought? No? Okay. I have a piggyback too, but go ahead.
So is, is the reason that it doesn't work, because clearly you've been doing this long enough and you're saying it doesn't work, is it because of the distribution at grade levels or not knowing that? Or, or can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
It, it doesn't work because of where your buildings are and you can't change that, where your population centers are, you cannot change that, and it's not going to change. We're built out communities, we're Connecticut, right? The historic composition of the neighborhoods that we're trying to change, and a redistricting that moves 30, 40 students from each school, so everybody's impacted. It, it just doesn't work from that standpoint. We had, we know we have capacity in the upper northwest corner, but in order to be able to unlock that, and we've shown it in the past, and we've shown the amount of change that will be necessary, it's going to be moving small blocks and we're going to move some large blocks. But we're not going to be able to equitably distribute students from one school to the next where everybody is equitably impacted while still maintaining a racial imbalance percentage of less than 20% at all of the schools.
So just to be clear then, let's say you had no handcuffs, no restraints, and you were redrawing our lines from scratch, completely blowing up the district and redrawing from scratch. Would we still be facing those same things based on the proximity of the schools and in coordination with the density and everything? I mean, even, even starting from scratch and redrawing all new lines, because it seems like a third grader drew these. You know, we'd still be facing this issue, right?
Yeah, when we talk walkability and not impacting walkers, typically it's about a mile, right? We have our walk sheds, depending on safe routes to school. And we did look at every student over the last several years that was truly a walker and actually walked to school, and we address matched those, we looked at those walking areas. And then you look at the density of students, it's like, you cannot be able, there's some very dense neighborhoods, there's that have a lot of students. You cannot impact one thing without having a negative impact on another one of these criteria. One of the things that would create a little easier situation, at least from a redistricting standpoint, is the ECC, if it doesn't become this moving part, right? It's this moving part, and it's always been a moving part. Whatever school has some free classrooms, we move it, we move it, we move it, right? But then ultimately, when you look at, especially this scenario of putting it in a smaller school like Jennings, you create a two-section per-grade school. In my opinion, that's not tenable. Because when you don't, when you have a two-section per-grade school, you're always going to need flex classrooms. You're going to need them at kindergarten, you're, you're going to need them at fourth and fifth grade, that transition where you're going to get bubbles. And when you put that critical mass, and it works better, when we work with districts, ECCs work better with their support services there in-house, they work better with a critical mass. So I understand the nature of what we're trying to accomplish. But when you put it in a school building that's not designed for it, you're now having a negative impact on the school population that attends that building. And then when we look at buildings that have space and that could potentially house it, you don't have the floor plan that is conducive to it. So if you were to say, well, let's move ECC over here, but you have ground floor egress requirements that you cannot achieve, that's the same with some of the CLC where you have ground floor egress requirements, where it's at Mill Hill now because there's ground floor classrooms. So part of the redistricting that I was showing of about 40 students, it's in essence because we need two classrooms there because of the demographics in the neighborhood. So we're trying to be able to accomplish things, and the special programs which have their own requirements get layered on that. And it's typical of many districts, they happen over time. It becomes ad hoc where we have space at this school, we're going to put this program there, it gets nestled in there, and then you've make other changes around it. So it becomes this difficult puzzle, right? But also, when you have a community that's very dense and very urban, and then you have it more suburban, you have the challenge of how do you keep long-term boundaries that have well, that are well utilized over time when the housing stock and the demographics that feed them change and the markets change? So it becomes this process of us looking at future development, moving boundaries based on future development, projecting enrollment, moving boundaries, and then looking at it and saying, well, what are we accomplishing with this? So I know we want to accomplish four or five things and do it once, but what we're advising from our experience is that it's becoming very, very challenging, and you may not actually be able to do that, especially when you want to be able to equitably distribute, you know, the redistricting, especially when you may not exactly know what the future of the ECC is going to look like and where it's going to go. You don't want to run a plan around something that may not be housed there permanently for 20 years. So it becomes a bit of, it becomes a bit of a challenge.
I'm going to follow up on a couple of things. Thank you for your explanation on some of that. I appreciate getting a little bit more information on it. The programs and utilizations, whether it be 4B or 4, when you guys were working with the working group or just on your own, did you take these scenarios down to the classrooms level? Meaning, you did the sections, you did whatever program it may be there, and you did the edspec rooms and other purposes, so you know that these scenarios actually fit within the current footprint of the buildings. For example, where it has 28, you know that it fits in that building, Dwyane 21, et cetera. Did you go down to the classroom level?
I can handle that, Mike, to give you a little break, if you want. I can handle that, Mike, if you'd like.
Hi, Pat. Hi.
Everybody, this is Pat Gallagher from SLAM, participating virtually. To answer your question, Jen, we didn't get down to that granular level. That's really kind of part of our refinement process. Once we have kind of a solid direction and an option to do that greater level of due diligence, and, you know, certainly we have information that can be provided that can help the administration understand, you know, by school by grade, how many classrooms you'll have, special programs, of course, as well. But we did not do that for this scenario at this time, but we can.
It's entirely possible that for some of these scenarios, they don't fit actually within some of the buildings. That's possible.
I suppose it is, yes.
I think in scenario 4B where we're limiting Jennings to 13 full-size classrooms, I would say there's very little absorption there. So with two sections per grade, you have 43, 44, you know, anything over your class-sized target for kindergarten, you would need another section. When you have the 504 buildings, those are more resilient to a one or two student. And there's going to be some scenarios, just like we do every year, and when you're doing FTEs, you're doing your budget, where you may look at it and say, oh, we have a bubble here, and we're going to have to now, two students push us over a bubble, we're going to have to now shift the program, right? So we're looking at it as if what we're given program-wise is rigid and not changing for 10 years. And that is not probably how you would really operate, or any district would really operate. So we go at the approach of we're projecting enrollments by school by grade, but also, I don't know exactly how you make decisions when you do your staffing every year. So when you're breaking out FTEs in a building and you're looking at exactly how many students per classroom, what is exactly your formula? That's, we're just projecting students, we're not dividing up into sections yet.
Okay, thank you. The July 20th meeting, we did, you know, very clearly state that we wanted a new scenario, built off a traditional redistricting where the metrics would be green. Come back to us as green, and they didn't. So we spent about six weeks. Was there a point in time, did this happen more recently, where you could have figured that out earlier and maybe said that they're not going to come back green? So do you want us to just stop? I'm just feeling like we waited six weeks for a scenario that didn't come back with what we asked for. Understanding that you did the work that, you know, you did, but 4B doesn't resolve racial imbalance, it's imbalanced still, and it doesn't balance utilization, which when you ask about outcomes, that was our goal. Everything below that goal was a consideration or guidance. So all the programming, all of that, the goal was to balance utilization and resolve racial imbalance. Did you just realize recently that this wasn't going to come back green?
I've been saying since our July 13th meeting that traditional redistricting is not going to get you 20% racial imbalance. And yet I'm asked again and again to do a traditional redistricting, you need to get you below 20% racial imbalance. And to the point of getting below your utilization goals, we were asked to color code according to how we view utilization of greater than 90%. The district-wide utilization becomes 90% in 28, 29. So all of your elementary buildings collectively are above 90%. So I don't know how we can return schools that are below 90% when your district-wide, based on the space that you have, is above 90%. So I, I understand I didn't do my job right, correct, but also, I'm being asked to create a utilization for all of the elementary buildings when your collection of buildings are above that.
The in the out years, I understand. I was talking more about the swing. So if I just want to get to the point here, you're saying that we can't redistrict with a redistricting, so your solution is the only way that we can resolve racial imbalance through redistricting is through satellite zones?
I didn't say that satellite zoning was the only way. I mean, you, if you want to be below 20%, that was an option that worked. If you were to remove ECC from the buildings and had some additional space and freed up those 10 classrooms, maybe it could be more comprehensive, the redistricting, and check some more boxes, but right now.
Or the other programming.
Or some of the other programming. If you were to have some of that out of the buildings and we had space in the buildings, and we had appropriate space. So when we look at, when we look at the buildings and we're working with operations, we know how many ground-level classrooms, we're going through these iterations behind the scenes of trying to be able to figure it out to make it work, right? This is what I was asked to be able to produce, and I didn't deviate from that. We produced it, and the reason it took six weeks was because unfortunately, I took a vacation, so, and we had several meetings where we discussed things that worked and didn't work before we spent all the time doing it, ultimately getting to a point about two and a half weeks ago where we said, this may work, but we think it's going to be 22, 23% overall from the racial imbalance, and we ran with it.
On this last slide that you shared this evening, did you actually run maps and everything for that?
We put this together after we put the agenda package out, so.
So that this is just a theoretical concept at this point, like in terms of you don't have maps or utilizations or any of that supporting.
I wouldn't call it theoretical, if I may speak. I wouldn't call it theoretical at all. I would say we've looked at the demographics of certain areas and we're giving you suggestions while keeping within the charge of what we're being asked to do. We're not stepping out of our scope of work. At one of the earlier meetings when we did a couple of things, there was a lot of feedback towards us as the consultants of not to only do what's exactly asked of us, and that's what we're doing. So that's why I did exactly what was asked, knowing that these are slight improvements, and that's why I then put them in here, because I stepped back and I looked at it and I said, this could actually make it a little bit better. And I felt the need to provide it, whether or not I was asked for it by the board. As your consultant, I felt I needed to do that.
No, that's great, thank you, I appreciate that. I just wondered if it had been built out yet. Mrs. Vitale?
Thank you. Thank you for this. I, I think I thought that a 4B would, with tweaks, you know, would have come up with something better. I understand from your explanation that that wasn't really possible, but I do want to point out that you did present a scenario that solves all three of the problems we asked you to solve. Racial imbalance, utilization, and the ECC, and that was scenario 1A. And I think we keep trying to find another scenario that's going to make everybody comfortable and everybody happy, and we're never going to have that. And if you look at the barriers and the zones for 1A, it's the most like a traditional redistricting. It moves larger pockets of kids, which is something we've asked you to do. And I really think that the board needs to revisit 1A after seeing what a 4B does.
Anyone else? Mrs. Vitale?
Thank you for the presentation. Would this 4B look different if the ECC wasn't in Jennings? Because I, I've had concerns, and I've been pretty vocal at the table about just putting ECC classrooms in that building because of the size and just some of the condition of the facilities. And because in terms of, when you look at the map, it is, it borders McKinley, and when moving students, I could see you potentially wanting the space in that school to have movement between Jennings, Stratfield, and McKinley. Those three elementary schools are a mile and a half apart. So the neighborhood school demographic, when you're looking at trying to keep kids walking and close to their, their school, I could see why you would have movement. That said, I am not in favor of the map for 4B. It looks more like 3B, kind of like satellite zones revisited. But I just wanted to have a better understanding of Jennings and the, whatever, 17 students that are moving from Jennings to McKinley. Are those 17 students moving because you need space in Jennings for the ECC? Or are they moving to help the racial makeup at McKinley?
I can speak to that, Mike, if you'd like. Hi, this is Pat Gallagher again. To answer your question, it is both. We needed to move additional students into McKinley with certain demographics to get us below 25% for most years, and we also us below 25% for most years, and we also needed to shift students out of Jennings in order to free up some additional space to accommodate the ECC. If that program weren't at Jennings, in order for this scenario to be below, at or below 25% for most of those years, you would still need to shift students from Jennings into McKinley for racial balance purposes.
I have maps from 2016 that looks very much a lot of movement, to Mrs. Gerber's point of moving kids around the horn. McKinley to Stratfield, 49 students. Holland Hill to McKinley, 92 students. McKinley to Holland Hill, 81 students. Holland Hill to Sherman, 53 students. Osborne Hill to Holland Hill, 91 students. Osborne Hill to Riverfield, 36 students. Sherman to Riverfield, 128. Riverfield to Mill Hill, 68. Riverfield to Osborne Hill, 44. Riverfield to Dwight. You get the idea. I just bring this up now because it sounds like that's what a traditional redistricting would look like. And before we ask you to go back potentially and revisit it, are we going to get a map, you think, that might look a lot like this one in terms of just all those little pockets of kids moving around the district? And I don't mean to put you on the spot like that with stuff that you did six years ago, but I mean...
Try to see which scenario it was from back...
Was it E or F?
We have scenario E and F from 2016, and both of them have just more of a... And philosophically, in terms of what we're looking at, is this, for the board, more of what we want? Not, you know...
Can I piggyback, Mrs. Vitale? I think a very large difference from then, and tell me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Zuba, is that we weren't holding back so many classrooms, therefore, there was more space to move students. We're holding back a 483 to a 504 worth of classrooms, basically taking a school offline for programming, almost. So basically, right in terms of the space. We didn't have that kind of a constraint at that time. There was more space to move people, but yeah, wrong.
Exactly. Well said. And demographics shifted a little bit since then, because it's been almost seven, eight years, but the programming, and I don't have an exact count of how many classrooms, if that's the accurate number, but I know there's a lot, because I don't remember what we had capacity-wise in buildings back then. And then, we're adding on top of that, the expansion of the programs and the support spaces that need to be there.
And I was not looking for numbers, but just in terms of what the map might look like in terms of moving, and it would be smaller amounts of kids now, potentially, because of the space issues and just the change of demographics. But I just, time, I'm very sensitive to the fact that Ms. Jacobson is trying to keep us on a timeline. We've done, or you've done, worked for the district for years, so we do have some historical maps to look at for context. Before we have you go back, and another four or six weeks of work, maybe we don't necessarily, we might be able to get some information soon on what those maps theoretically could look like.
We could produce information sooner, but what is part of our charge and being asked to produce, so for every scenario, we have to do enrollment projections. So it takes, when I do annual enrollment projections, it takes a while. And now I have to move students into elementary, then I have to feed them into the middle because I have to move them into high school. So we want enrollment projections at three levels, that for each scenario, every time we move lines, we're running enrollment projections, we're moving housing developments in order to be able to be responsive to what's in the charge, what we're being held to contractually. So that is a major effort versus how we traditionally work, where we can look at things, move lines around, and using our experience and using our sense, know whether it works or not pretty quickly. So when I am able to put a slide together like this, I follow to a T of what my guidance was, whether it was the consensus of the board or whatever it may have been at the time, but then looking at it and say, after we've gone through and have done the work, we would make these suggestions to this to make it a little better. But I'm not going to be the one to do this without the direction from the board with how the past presentations have gone. So with that said, if we were to look at true feasibility, which you always start at before you give a full boat of 25 slides of information, you can be able to figure out what can possibly be accomplished that would be acceptable or not acceptable.
And, Mike, to piggyback on that, Mike, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you.
The three approaches that are on the final slide really are the only three ways to address racial imbalance at McKinley to improve it from scenario 4B. And it's really kind of focused on those schools immediately adjacent to it. So if we were to take a comprehensive look at redistricting, we might make one of those three tweaks to the areas immediately around McKinley, but any other moves outside of that wouldn't have an impact on the racial imbalance at McKinley.
And if you haven't done the seven-year look back, was that based on 22, 23 enrollment numbers to get to that 20%? Or did you actually do a few years' look back? And sign if you haven't already, but I'm just wondering how the five or seven-year look back looked.
For which of the...
One or two.
So we did a seven-year look back for all of them.
And for one or two here on this new slide here, how did that look?
Let me look at this. So for just shifting that small area to Holland Hill, you would reduce McKinley by about a percent on average. So we averaged 23.3%. You'd get down to 22 and a half, so marginal improvement. Option two, you're getting basically two schools at 20%, which is consistent with all of our traditional redistricting scenarios that we've done over the years, is if you were to do a swap between Holland Hill and McKinley, you would have two buildings that are above that 20% threshold in any given year. It might flip-flop on either side of that line in any given year, but that's certainly something that, from our standpoint, in terms of longevity, is a concern.
Thank you.
About 20%.
And, Pat, wouldn't number two require additional ground floor regress at Dwight?
Yes. So everything, to your point, Mike, one of the challenges here is that everything's dependent. It's kind of a domino effect of, we need to, if we're shifting ECC to a different facility than Holland Hill, we really need to make sure that that facility works from a facility standpoint, whether that's North Stratfield or whether that's Dwight, before we could even look at that from a feasibility standpoint.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Just as an aside, boy, we really could have used those extra three classrooms at Mill Hill, couldn't we? Quite a shame that the powers that be just decided that we couldn't do it. In any event, so I just had a question here. Looking at the package from this meeting, where you say traditional redistricting cannot achieve sustainable racial balance within 20% of district-wide average at all schools unless McKinley students are shifted to at least two other schools. But scenario four, they do get shifted to two schools, and they still aren't, it's still fair. So I guess I just, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I think we were looking at the context of having Holland Hill and McKinley both at about 20% of what would make sense, just neighboring, being able to move students within that core area, we would have two schools at about 20% under that one.
Scenario four. I was looking back at scenario four, like the earlier scenario four that we got, because that did move McKinley to two different schools. They went to Osborne Hill and Holland Hill, and yet, it was fair. We're solving the racial imbalance too, so it didn't really work then either.
Yeah.
Right. Yes. Mrs. Vitale?
For this page, for number two, could the same thing be said if you shifted McKinley students to Jennings instead of Holland Hill and you just take the ECC out of Jennings? Being that that also borders...
I can speak to that, Mike, if you'd like. So the challenge with that is that the neighborhoods of McKinley that border Jennings have the lowest share of students that are minority students. And so you would have to take the whole area surrounding McKinley School, shift them to Jennings, and you're shifting the lowest concentration of minority students today out of McKinley. So that just wouldn't be feasible.
Thank you. Can I ask a quick follow-up to that? Yes. In fact, the McKinley neighborhood with the lowest minority population is being shifted to Stratfield in 4B. So the lowest percentage number is not the one that borders Jennings, it's the one that borders Stratfield that 4B switches. So again, I don't understand why the decisions were being made. I'm just making that as a statement.
If I may, that's the challenge, all along with contiguous attendance zones. If we want to grab some of those lower, higher-concentration neighborhoods in McKinley and shift them to Stratfield, which has empty space because we shifted those five ECC classrooms out, we have to go through a lower-minority concentration neighborhood of McKinley. There's no avoiding it unless we were to use that satellite zone approach. We also have ECC at Holland Hill. We cannot move students into Holland Hill without causing all sorts of domino effects. So we're really hamstrung by the geography and the program placement. It's just, there's too many moving parts to simply say, yep, we're going to just shift to the South because programmatically it doesn't work and there's not enough space at the receiving facilities for marginal improvements to racial imbalance. So there's a method behind this. The maps may not make the most sense if you're just looking at the map on its own without having all the underlying data, but everything we have chosen has been deliberate to best try to address the competing objectives that we're trying to work through with you all.
Mr. Isa, come here.
So while we have this map up on the screen, I wish I could take this because I want to use my hand to circle it, but Mr. Zubit, oh, hold on. Yeah. Do you have a little red pointer? So, yeah. Mrs. Jacobson, do you mind? So...
Thank you. What do you do to get this to a green button? Okay. No, it disappears on the smart, I know. Yeah, but it disappears on the smart board.
So that area, I'll call it the bottom of the peninsula here of McKinley, where it's 58.9, 67.9, 64.9. What was the reason that we didn't look at moving that population down to Sherman? Because I remember in a previous iteration, it showed movement there. So it is, and maybe this is to Patrick, I don't know, but cutting off the bottom of the peninsula, which is contiguous with Sherman, and expanding the Sherman district that way, wouldn't that naturally have a greater impact?
So it comes down to a few things. It comes down to utilization, the most part here. So under this scenario, we did shift some students from Holland Hill, which is also a higher-minority concentration neighborhood, the tip of the peninsula for Holland Hill. But we can't move too many students into Roger Sherman, because if you look at Slide 10, our projected utilization, we are, with that small shift from Holland Hill, which is again, a more diverse neighborhood, we're at about 98, 99% in the last few years of the projections.
To the point that's been made tonight about shifting people out of schools to make room for others, wouldn't that be accomplished? If you, and I'm not saying, I'm asking the question honestly, like, if you had to move 50 kids from the bottom of the peninsula and move 50 out to other surrounding schools, would that achieve the balance?
Mrs. Gerber, can I just interject for one second, Mr. Isa? So that 58.9, that's Holland Hill. That's not McKinley.
Correct.
Correct. What about 63?
Right, no, that part is, but you mentioned the 58. I just wanted to clarify that that bottom part is Holland Hill.
What I'm talking about then is both schools then. So I'm talking about the bottom of that peninsula. So technically, I'm wrong, I apologize. It's McKinley and Holland Hill students.
So if we were to move students into Roger Sherman, more than we have proposed under scenario 4B, that school would be overutilized. If we look at all of the schools that border Roger Sherman, we have Osborne Hill at 100% in the later years of the, actually, by 26, 27. We have Riverfield growing to 92, 93%. We have Mill Hill growing at 92 or 93%. So any large shift, a large enough shift to accommodate those, let's just say hypothetically, 50 students, you'd have to shift 50 students out of Roger Sherman, and none of the schools that border Roger Sherman have space to accommodate those students.
Unless you moved students from those schools, is what you're saying?
Exactly. The whole domino effect.
I'm not proposing a suggestion, I'm asking a question, so...
You can't. Yeah, Mrs. Kelly?
Well, in scenario four, which is the one I thought we were building off of, that's exactly what we're doing. We're taking 40 kids from Holland Hill to Sherman, and then we're taking 42 from Sherman to Riverfield. Exactly. We're moving them around. So I'm 1,000% agreement with Mr. Isa about that part of the peninsula. In my admittedly naive ideas, I guess you would say, I was thinking 4B would have actually increased that amount of kids either from Holland Hill and expand, you have Holland Hill, those 34 kids going to Holland, basically, I was looking at that whole entire area south of 95, getting shifted over to Sherman, and then the other side of Reef Road, having to, just making that shift. Again, I don't know what the classroom numbers look like. You said before that it's impossible to do these things, but we did it with 40 and 40. I don't know if that was just terribly convenient, but that's where I was thinking 4B was going to take us from scenario four as a starting point.
It was my understanding that scenario four wasn't a favorable option because we had moved smaller peer groups of 18 or 20 students.
We did say that.
And that's, we eliminated the movement of smaller peer groups, and that's before B is.
Right. I'm sorry, I thought that that meant the groups were going to get bigger. That's what I thought.
I can't make, the groups are as large as we were possibly able to make them within the capacity of the building. If we were able to make them bigger, one of our principles is to move large peer groups. I had a daughter who was redistricting, moved to part of the small peer group. I understand what it is. I mean, we're not intentionally not doing what you're asking of us. I just want to get that clear, because it feels like that's the sense that I'm getting from the board. And also, I'm hearing different messages from everybody around the room of things that they would want to accomplish. Once again, I will state it, in order to have a successful planning or design process, the owner, the client, needs to have a consensus. If I do what one member of the board wants, it does what another member of the board wants. So right now, I'm trying to appeal and appease many different masters that I don't feel are working together like a board to give us a unified direction in order to accomplish what is the most necessary thing that needs to be accomplished as part of this process.
I think what the board wanted is in our charge in terms of, we wanted a scenario that balanced our schools to 85 to 90%, got racial imbalance below 20%, stayed 23 classrooms of programming in their appropriate locations, and kept walkers as walkers while you did it. And what I'm hearing is, that's just not possible.
Jacobson? At no point did we say, keep walkers as walkers. I want to be very clear.
Preferably, kept walkers as walkers. Preferably, kept walkers as walkers. So within, what we wanted can't be done. Mr. Isa, can you answer my question?
We ran so many different things in the springtime, trying to accomplish all of those that we did without running projections, going back and forth, working with the administrative team, trying to find a classroom here or there or this to make it work, looking at different areas, programming could be placed, where it had a positive impact on the students that were going to be in those special programs, in order to deliver what we delivered in June as what we thought were three of the options, approaches, not options, approaches that came closest to trying to touch on each one of those areas. And then we presented it as a balance needs to be struck because you cannot accomplish all of these goals, but yet, here we are, two months later, still trying to accomplish all of those goals with modification... But yet, here we are, two months later, still trying to accomplish all of those goals with modifications to approaches. And now I'm hearing from different board members of different ideas of what they want to accomplish.
So and some.
And, and in summary, I can't attain 85 to 90% utilization when, starting in a few years, you're going to be in the mid 80s, in the high 80s.
And I'm not denying, I know that you called it, I'm saying, it was impossible.
It's very difficult and.
At least to the degree that we wanted it to be.
Yeah, and now that we've looked at it in a million different ways, we're trying to give direction to try to make what we feel is tweaks to what we thought was the unified approach of the board. But what we're now looking at is saying, really, the board needs to, before we go and keep spinning our wheels, what truly should we try to do? And been through many facility planning processes, many school constructions, school closures, school redistricting. If you have a sense of urgency to get back to the state with a corrective action plan, create a plan that has the least impact on what your future plans may be so that you don't paint yourself into a corner on anything else when it comes to ECC or when it comes to anything else programmatically. You can put a corrective action plan together and that plan may succeed, or that plan may not succeed in the state's eyes, but you've met the intent of the law in creating the corrective action plan.
Isa, go ahead.
No, I, I was just going to say to your point that you made, just, though, just to clarify, a couple of the scenarios that they did give us did, in theory, meet the charge, right? With the, with the balancing, with the racial imbalance. So, because just going back to an earlier conversation, so not saying there was, but the board unanimously or in a majority took those off the table, right?
You mean like the satellite zones and things like that?
Yeah, like 1A and the satellite zones that the board removed from contemplation. Those actually did accomplish what they were charged to do. It just was not the way the board wanted to do it, based on the majority.
Well, I understand what you're saying. I meant with the traditional approach. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that you were talking specifically about the traditional scenario for philosophy.
It's on 4B. Okay. So we're not going to get to the rest of the topic until later in the meeting, and I know Mr. Zubot and Pat have to leave the meeting. So before they depart, is there any other questions that anyone has for SLAM this evening? Mrs. Kelly.
I guess this is for you before them, but I don't know where we're going with this. So I don't know if this means, do we need another scenario? Do we need another, and so is it just an assumption that any? Are you warning? I don't want one either. I don't want to waste another four weeks or six weeks or whatever.
We don't have that time.
My question is, if that's where we're going, how quickly can we expect to turn, is, is, and is that standard? And I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I did get, the answer is what it is. You need time to do the work and do it right. I just, or would just like to know, like.
When, our approach was that we would be refining scenarios. When we're moving special programs, having the operations team go out and look at classrooms, try to figure out a way to put ECC in different buildings, to me, that's entirely, that takes time because that requires coordination of getting in and out of buildings. Us being able to run numbers, meet and discuss. When we were at this phase of the process and I had a schedule, I mean, we had refinement down now, not new.
Yeah, I was going to just refer back to the June 13th presentation where September is the time where our 23, 24 enrollment numbers would be plugged into any preferred scenario of the board. And central office would be operationalizing budgetary impacts, busing transportation routes and all that. That's all to be done in September. Our first read is in three meetings. So at least a month would be, just, it's good to know though, Mr. Zubot, like if the conversation goes down later on this evening where we do want to get something different. Roughly, it's been at least a month, right?
If you want enrollment projections by school, by grade for everything as part of each scenario, if you want to know if something works, that becomes something different.
A month, right, at least.
If you want to know if something works, we could do it quicker, but ultimately, it's been, we provide maps, we're doing detailed maps, we're doing street addresses, we're doing a mountain of work for something that we know doesn't work. But that's what is given to us as our contract to the board.
Mr. Isa.
Yeah, through the chair to Mr. Testani, can you just touch on, I mean, we have this, we have this deadline, right? And we've got this deadline for the state, we've got our plan, there was an amended plan that was approved by the state. Realistically, if, if we're still working on this and we were not voting on it by the October meeting, i- is it safe to say that this would not be implementable in the 24, 25 school year?
It would be extremely difficult, especially with possible budget implications that we would have to prepare for come the fall.
So it would mean going back to the state with another amendment to our plan and hoping they accept it? With the alternative of them taking action against us with a 10 4B and ultimately a court order, but hopefully not.
I mean, I can't predict what, how they will react, but I think it'll be more than just the plan on, I think it'll be a, a more detailed plan of this is what we're doing, not the original plan from November, which had a bunch of possibilities. So I think.
I just want to piggyback, Mr. Isa, so just to be clear, we are going to be taking action in October of some kind. That's what we already voted on. So even if that action is to delay that action, there will be action in October. I'm just knowing you, it's like you said, well, if you don't.
If you know it's going to happen, couldn't we take action prior to October if we knew it was imminent?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, of course, if this board decides they want to make a racial imbalance plan amendment and send that up to the state, knowing that you cannot actually implement your amendment until it's approved by the state. So the current amendment that we, is still on track. The dates don't change, unless they get us on an agenda in September or something and they approve any amendment that we done. In other words, you cannot implement your amendment until it's approved. That is the path in majority this board wants to go down. I suggest we get to work on that so that we can take care of it in September. And I think that Mr. Testani would need to, and even myself, I'd be happy to join, would probably need to give a pretty serious and comprehensive update to the commissioner.
Okay, thank you. I, in no way am I advocating, that was an honest, open question. Because it's coming, that that may be a part, I'm not saying it is, but it may be a possibility. So procedurally, it's nice to know what we have to do.
Valid, no, totally valid, Mr. Isa, thank, Mr. Good, Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, I guess to the chair or through the chair to Mr. Testani, when's the last update that the state board has gotten? I know we're supposed to be giving them updates, I just wasn't sure where, if they were aware of all the work that's been going on this summer.
I was able to get an extension until the end, the beginning of next week from the act, the August 2nd update because of all the vacations and everyone at the state. So they are informally aware that we're moving and making some progress, but they're also informally aware that that there's challenges and, you know, the last time we spoke, we talked about possibilities of other options, other approaches. So they'll get something more detailed after tonight's meeting.
Okay, so I guess you said the conversations you had with the other approaches. Where did things stand with that?
Just some feedback, nothing definitive. And every update we've given, we don't get any feedback regarding the, the reporting. So I don't know if they're even, what they do with them. They just get sent up, received, and that's it. So I, I don't know what happens once they receive them, if they go as part of a file, if they get discussed, if they're, they meet on it, I have no idea. They don't provide any information back. So I, I'm just doing these reports, they're very generic. They're similar to the ones Greenwich and everyone else submits. But I don't get any feedback as to if there's any follow up, anything else we need to do, anything we're doing that's not sufficient, it's just received.
I might, I mean, maybe we can talk about this offline, but I might suggest an alternative approach this time. We've done a lot of work since May, a lot of meetings, a lot of backup minutes, video, et cetera. Since we are challenging so much and I don't know how you feel about this, since it's your update, but I might suggest that we actually provide a comprehensive update with our, just all of the work that this board has done and our presentations and links to things. And if they don't want to read it, that's fine. But I think at this point, it's, I would hope to see that we give them a really comprehensive update. Because we've done a lot of work, you know, I mean, we have, and we're experiencing some challenges and I would like for them to understand what those challenges are.
I'm more than happy to do that. I, I, we've done a ton of work. I, I don't think we've gotten anywhere. So it's kind of hard to say we've done all of this and then they want to know where we're at and what's next. And I think the answer to that is, we're still in this spot that, for me. And that's hard to, it's hard to really comprehend at this point on their part. Because I think they thought we'd be much further along based on the other two reports that they received.
Mrs. Gerber, go. Yeah, and I don't know if now is the right time to bring this up, or if you should bring it during the, we're having another discussion later, I guess, about redistricting. So, but just at some point, I do think it's important for us to touch on the topic of grandfathering because I, I understand that, you know, it's something that we, we will discuss and vote on after we approve a plan. But I will be quite honest that my view of any plan is colored by whether or not, or how much, we are able to grandfather. So I think it would be helpful to have that discussion in terms of, you know, I know we have a bus driver shortage. Will we be able to grandfather or not? Or will we be able to do limited grandfathering? I, I do think that's an important discussion to have at some point, whether it's now, whether it's in a later time. I just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, I just want to let Mr. Zubot go and SLAM if they're done. So I just would like to, any questions specifically for the consultant that may help you later on tonight? Mrs. Max and Kelly.
And I think this goes without saying, but I'd rather say it while you're here, is that I'm not positive what exactly the direction of this board is going to be. You know, obviously, that's going to be later on the agenda where we really do have to get more definitive. So just my earnest plea to the consultants, if there is any question, any ambiguity on anything that we've asked for, or that if there's anything we've asked for which is not possible, that, you know, I think we've, we've had an interest in having special meetings, you know, that we're, we're interested in that feedback. So again, I'm sure you would have said it anyway, Mrs. Jacobson, but I just feel better doing it as well of, please give us that feedback, or again, seeking clarity for anything that we come out of this meeting with.
And before I let you go, Mr. Zubot, depending on how layer goes tonight, what would be helpful to you, and Mr. Isa talked about some of this, but you just need clear direction on, I heard, what is your number one priority and goal in terms of what you want to focus on, correct?
Correct. I wouldn't, what is the must have as part of this process, right? And then what is kind of the, it would be great if we were able to do these other things. Because ultimately, any redistricting is a give and take. Any planning process, there's some compromise in it. Never one that, even with space and building, new buildings, that you can make it work to everyone's satisfaction in the community. It's a redistricting. It's a challenging process on everybody, and I feel ultimately, the more times we create scenarios, we're now, my hands cramping, into the community, then into the conversation that may or may not ultimately be impacted by that redistricting option. If I, we were to go and look at what we've kind of identified areas now, we've touched on so many different areas, and it's all still kind of floating in the ether out there. So I think, you know, just that narrowing of focus, determining what is that sole voice on what we're trying to accomplish so we can do our work and be able to present something that hopefully it can at least lead us to the refinement process because it's getting late in the, late in the season. We typically have these adopted October, knowing that budget season starts, especially for the following year, and staffing, busing, routing, all that work that comes after this is important.
Okay. Oh, so, Mrs. Vitale.
I just want, something you just said, I want to thank you for the scenarios and the work that you've done. And I know that it has been hard for the community and very stressful, but the state did ask us for a community conversation. And I think that if nothing else, all these scenarios did, you know, enable that and to give us a better picture of what we're dealing with as a district. So, um, thank you.
Mr. Isa.
Sorry, one last thing, Mr. Zubot. Just to be clear, if the board is able tonight to come up with that clear direction, is it acceptable to your firm to get that in, in a memo versus a whole new charge?
A memo is perfect. You don't need a whole new charge.
Thank you.
We just want to know that we're all tugging on the same war together. The consultant, the board, the administration, the community, that's all.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
For Mr. Testani, just in terms of communication with the state and other conversations about other options. Is, is that like the magnet program, which is part of our plan, that we got a presentation on it? And any feedback that you may have received from the state board or the commissioner? And I ask that question because, you know, we were, Mr. Asa and Mr. Cummings, we had a conversation with, you know, asking them for some ideas. And magnet programming did come up at that point, voluntary movement, engaging, having a community conversation. They were very much wanting us to bring the community along on whatever plan we ultimately adopt. And I don't want, I know that, you know, the magnet program did not move forward. I still was excited by it for multiple reasons. If there's any feedback that we've received from the state, I think it's important that the full board and the public know.
Sure. No feedback from the state board, they were not involved in the conversation. The explanation of how it would be, it would be done was, the feedback was, was different than whatever's been tried in other places historically. But again, not a yay or nay, hey, you know, that's going to work great. I think ultimately, what was made clear from the folks, the staffing there is that the state board says you have to do something, it is up to the local board to decide what that approach will be to solve the issue. Now, again, the magnet program is an option. It wa, it was an option. I just wanted to be clear that just for my own sake, I'm not going to say it's going to work. And the reason why I say that, it could, no doubt about it, is by all the emails that were received, and there was a lot of them. And I know you, you folks got more than I did. It takes people opting in and kids moving out. So unfortunately, the kids moving out impact one school, and we know that school was very vocal about not being removed. And it takes people to opt in, which from the emails, doesn't sound like too many people want to opt into anything. There was a handful, but the vast majority liked walking, the vast majority bought their homes for the specific school. And I'm just being honest. So I don't want to be here in a year or two, and then the scapegoat becomes me. And that's just being honest. And I, I have to do that because I don't see this as the magic bullet. I just see it as something that could potentially be very, very possible, but it has to be seen by folks as something that they would desire to come to first. And I don't think we have the time to, to check. To solve racial imbalance for the state, it could be still part of a long-term plan, which I still am pursuing to, to look at, that component at a particular school.
I would really prefer if we hold this conversation to the next agenda item so that our other guests that are here this evening.
Absolutely.
They can do their presentations because we do have this conversation later, if you don't mind. Okay. I am going to move on to the next item. We have 2022, 2023 climate survey results by Mr. McHussey. We have 2022, 2023 climate survey results by Mr. McKezey.
Thank you, Meg. Good evening, everybody. Rob McKezey, Executive Director, Special Education and Special Programs. I'm going to be giving you an overview of the climate surveys. If you don't already know, district climate surveys and the results based on level and by school, all posted on the website, similar to previous years. This is just going to be an over that, an overview format of all the results. And I'm going to ask you to beg with me, because I can't see over there that far, so as I switch slides, you might see me refer to my, my pages over here. So in terms of the survey window, the window was open from March 22nd to April 6, 2023, and we had parent surveys, we had staff surveys, and we had elementary, middle, and high school student surveys. And the building level data was shared with all principals on May 22nd. This slide includes the overall amount of responses over the past three school years. I hope I don't get specific questions on the drop in the, in the amount of responses. I do have feelers out to try to ascertain why we had a lower response rate in 22, 23. Here is your parent guardian responses by level. So at the elementary level, we had approximately 21% of our parents completed the parent climate surveys. The middle school had about 24, and the high school had about 10% of our high school parents responded to their climate surveys. Again, this is a breakdown by school of the percentage of parents who had responded to the parent surveys since the 2016, 2017 school year. So I'll give you a few seconds to just take a look at that.
I'm sorry, it's the number of responses, right? Not the percentage?
That is the number of parents who responded to surveys. And here's the secondary responses by middle school and high school, including Walter Fitzgerald and Community Partnership Program. Again, lower numbers this past school year than previous school years. The percentage of teachers or staff responses across the district, at the elementary level, we had a 24% response rate by our staff to our surveys. The middle school, we had 43% cheers to the middle school, and a 33% response rate for our high school teachers and staff. Here's a quick overview of district results on the survey. The interesting part of this is we, we look a lot at student connectedness. So this one question, we don't have all the questions, we have this one question that we just wanted to show you. There's at least one adult at my school that I can talk to when I have a problem or concern. So kids know that there, there's adults there that care for them, and that are there to help them if they need help. So you can see the percentage of positive response, neutral response, and negative response. And the negative responses include disagree, strongly disagree, and the positive responses include agree, strongly agree, and the neutral is neither, neither disagree or agree. So that's over a two-year period. Responses fall into five domains, like the, the surveys that we have have five different domains, include institutional environment, teaching and learning, safety, interpersonal relationships, and communication. And you can see the average domain score for each of those, those domains. So they have not changed very much. In some areas, they've gone slightly above what it was, in some, it's gone slightly below in the 21, 22 to the 22, 23 school year. Again, a different way to look at the breakdown of the domains for parent responses, positive, neutral, and negative across two school years, from 21, 22 to 22, 23. If the board wants the, all the individual questions that are under each domain, we can certainly send that to. Just some examples, so you know when you're looking at the domains, some examples just of safety, questions, the rules are fairly and consistently enforced at this school, administrators deal with problems and conflicts fairly, my child has been insulted, teased, made fun of, or excluded at school, my child has been physically hurt or threatened by another. Those are some of the questions under the safety domain. Under the interpersonal relationships domain, I feel welcome at my child's school, my child is taught to respect individual differences at school, including gender, race, ethnicity, culture, socioeconomic, and abilities. Those are just examples of sections under specific domains. Again, average domain scores for all our teachers from 21, 22 to 22, 23. Teacher responses by domain. Again, the red is negative, so that's disagree, strongly disagree, neutral is neither, and the blue is positive, agree, strongly agree, across the different domains. Little bit more, here's high school student average domain scores. So you can see the comparison across the two school years and the different domains on the climate surveys. High school student responses by domain. Of interest here, you'll note the communication domain. There was a miscalculation on Thursday when you received your original packet. I think you got the corrected version of that. The communication domain consists of one question, and that question is, my teachers communicate important day-to-day information to me. And the responses are, all of my teachers, most of my teachers, some of my teachers, none of my teachers. So as you can see, the blue, 63%, is a combined, all of my teachers, some of my teachers, the neutral response there, no, all of my teachers or most of my teachers, I'm sorry. The neutral response is some, and then the red response is none, which is the negative response we don't want to see. Middle school student average score by domain again. Some cases, it's gone up in some domains, some case, it's, yeah, and this one, it looks like they've all gone up except one, except the, the first domain. Again, middle school students' responses by domain, positive, neutral, or negative across two school years. Elementary, our students in elementary, grades three through five, take the survey. The responses to the domains for elementary students, positive, negative, or neutral. And this is our website, where you can click on that link, and you can get all, see all the surveys, the different levels, the, the staff, the parent, the student surveys, by school, by level. If there's any questions regarding the district climate surveys.
Mrs. Gabor. Sort of embarrassed to ask this, because I should know, but for the parent survey, what languages was that available in?
It was in English and I believe Spanish.
Thank you. Mrs. Maxine Cannelly.
Yeah, just a few questions. Regarding the building level data shared May 22nd, so obviously that, I am assuming that this data had an impact on the school improvement plans, and I was wondering if you could give an example of some specifics, just as, as a sample, some specific steps. And I don't even know the name of the school, but what would be a goal that a school would have as a reflection of their attention to the results of this survey?
That 100% of students in every school knows that there's somebody there they, they could go to, that's connected to them, that they know. So student connectedness and social-emotional learning, that whole concept is embedded throughout school improvement plans, and data from these are analyzed by each school-based team, and then goals are developed around that to improve in a certain specific area.
With something like that at the high school, for example, is there a specific focus on? I mean, every student has a counselor. You know, that, that's a score, I'll admit, I'd hoped would be higher, especially at the high school level, where it's someone with you for those four years. You know, is that a specific focus, or are we trying to do it more in the classroom? Or like, where is that going?
I would say it's across the board. We are really focusing this year on classroom connections, building classroom connections, that's part of the SEL work that we're doing with our staff.
And then, I know you said, don't ask about the response rate, but I'm going to specifically just throw out that, that 2018, 19 school year, when Dr. Jones was here, I can only suggest, please ask our building leadership, what happened that year, because those numbers are off the chart, and that's across the entire district. So there clearly, something happened in the 18, 19 school year.
Agreed.
One thing I said, when there's at least one adult at my school that I can talk to when I have a problem, did that clarify personal versus academic?
It did not.
Because if, if someone's having an academic problem and doesn't feel that there's an adult to talk to about difficulty with a math problem, for example, did they understand that to be more of a personal nature?
It would be either. Question, the way it's written, I mean, you could, you could assume, well, you may not assume, but it seems to be written for somebody who's maybe struggling with something emotionally, versus academically. But it could certainly be any, any area where a student's struggling needs assistance.
Okay. And then I really have one other question. One thing I'm not understanding on this chart is the safety comparison from the left to the right. Because consistently with parents, from the parent guardian comparison to the student comparison, in all of them, or no, in most of them, so for example, on the parent guardian, safety clearly went up as a positive score, and on the left, I mean, excuse me, on the right, it went down. And I don't understand what I am misreading. Do you see what I'm talking about?
The parent guardian average score by domain?
Correct. So on the left, we see 3.37 improved to 3.83. On the right, clearly, the blue has gone down considerably, and blue and yellow combined has gone down considerably. So how is it going down on the right, but up on the left?
I'm going to have to look into that. I, I can't answer that right now.
Thank you.
And I apologize.
And it's on multiple, it's.
I don't see that.
Anyone else? Mrs. Vitale.
Can you just refresh my memory, just in terms of like the school climate teams at the schools, who is on them, how many people, and the work they do, how, how often they meet? You may not know this.
I don't know how often they meet. I know they meet regularly, because they all have, have teams, and it's, it's, it's usually support staff, like at the elementary, it might be a psych, the social worker, the principal, the assistant principal, or the EPF, teacher, parent. We meet regularly, and they build their school improvement plans, largely integrating this information.
At the secondary level, are, would students be involved in those schools?
Yes. Yes.
Do you have any, just looking at all of the data, any overarching thoughts about the survey, and areas that you're particularly proud of, areas maybe we need to do better on?
I can tell you, there has been a lot of discussion among at least administrators about revising the survey that we administer. We did not do that last year. We administered the same survey that we've been doing. We're doing a ton of SEL work, Move This World, we're rolling out pre-K through 12 this year, to try to, you know, strengthen relationships between students and staff. We'll be looking at different surveys in the near future.
Thank you. Mrs. Maxine Cannelly.
Yeah, Frank Musco, follow up to that. Isn't this something that the state is considering stepping in on and mandating a single survey that's going to be used across the state? Wasn't that something that was being talked about? There probably task.
Well, they do make, I'll let Mr. Frank's answer.
There is some new legislation. We do a climate survey annually, which is, which is.
A climate survey, but that the actual survey would, so that you're, in other words, you're talking about tweaking it, which I always respect, but that there, it might get taken out of our hands.
Yeah, there has been some new climate survey information that's come out, quite honestly. I need to review that and see how that applies to the future of administering this survey.
I will say that there was a significant school climate legislation passed this session that has to do with, and, you know, requiring things like climate coordinators, and climate specialists, and climate plans, and submitting, things like that. So I think that this will be coming back to us, for sure.
I have a question. What are you contributing to, I don't know how much, you know, digging into besides just the numbers that you've been able to do since the survey was done, but what are you contributing to that can, across the board, by population, you know, pretty significant decline in feelings of safety at school?
I know what I think. I think students were out of school for a long time, they were isolated for a long time, away from their friends, their teachers, their peers. And now getting back to school, they just want to feel secure and safe, and that's why, you know, we're not the only ones that are really focusing on strengthening students' SEL competencies, and focusing a lot of our attention on that. I, I think they're struggling more now than ever with mental health and social-emotional struggles. I'm not going to say that's all because of COVID. We saw it starting before COVID, but I do not think that it was assisted, but it was, COVID helped it at all.
And I know all the building reports are available online for anybody who would like to see their school or any others. But just in terms of your analysis on the bigger picture, just any discrepancies that you're concerned about, I mean, not, don't need to name certain buildings, but were there things that popped up in terms of variances?
What I can say to that is we've asked all building administrators and climate teams to take a close look at your climate results and to respond accordingly. As a district, we've just completed about a year ago, an SEL needs assessment, and we have a multi-year plan. This year, we're really, thank you to you. This year, we're really focusing on implementing Move This World, rolling that out. We've done a lot of professional development onto staff and to the leaders of that steering committee in terms of a good rollout for Move This World. And we also, every administrator in the district participated this summer in a three-day restorative practice training. So I think that's going to also have some impact as we start the school year, with people in authority having a different lens as they view children and being. in authority having a different lens as they view children and behaviors. And that will be part of later report as well. In addition to that, and thank you for bringing that up, it was one of the best three days of professional development I've been through in years. All administrators have gone through that, and now we're going to, you know, prioritize groups, we're going to get the resource officers, the psychs, the social workers, the councils, WFC staff, and then, you know, schedule additional staff over time. It was an excellent training.
Mrs. Vitale.
Just for the safety question, and not, I agree that, you know, that the kids' mental state of coming out of a pandemic could contribute to that, but I would also just look maybe at the date that the survey was conducted. Unfortunately, you know, other schools have had violence hit those schools, and maybe just the timing of what was happening someplace else might have contributed to the answers. And I think that would be valuable information to have if it's an external force of just current events.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you so much, Mr. McQsi. Okay, moving on to the 22, 23 Fairfield Cares student survey review. Ms. Hazlitt, welcome. Thank you for being patient with us.
You know, Meg's got this slide, there we go. It's late, so I'm going to, and there are a lot of slides, so I'm going to go by pretty quickly, but I'll begin by saying, my name is Kathy Hazlitt. I'm the program director of the Fairfield Cares Community Coalition. And these are the results of the 23 student survey that was conducted around early March, March 8th. We got most of the results in, so let me see if I'm doing this.
I think it's safe to say, if you choose to skip any slides, we have the material, so focus on the ones that are most important to you.
I will, I will. So yeah, very quickly, you know about the Fairfield Cares Community Coalition, so and you've got the slides, so I'm going to go through, we'll just get to the data. There was a good representation throughout. I just wanted to say, this was the most robust survey that we've conducted, I think, in the history maybe of doing the survey, so that was, that was really great. And good distribution of student population. Again, 13% of the student respondents identified as LGBTQ+, which was the same percentage in 2021. Wonderful protective factors. So going through this, I have to say, monitoring what students are doing is an area that we do want to focus on, and that comes up again and again, I think, when we look at the substance use prevention data. Here we are, this is somewhat contradictory to what Rob McQsi just said, but in at least in our survey, students were feeling pretty safe at school. And maybe it is the day that they took the survey, I don't know. But I think it's really wonderful that the vast majority of students feel that their teachers care. And I think that's, that also speaks to the social emotional programming that's been going on in the schools. I'd love to see that students care about each other a little bit more, particularly in the high school, but maybe that's typical teen stuff. LGBTQ, as you saw, that I included a lot of data around our LGBTQ student population. In every case, the LGBTQ students were, the data was worse than the non-LGBTQ students. Our plan is to be addressing LGBTQ students specifically with a separate grant that we hope to write shortly. And we've got an LGBTQ parent advisory committee helping with us that will get started soon. So feeling safe in the community, again, LGBTQ not as much. Good use of constructive use of time, which is a critical factor. And I think this is, this is really speaks well of, again, that students do feel like they have a trusted adult, the vast majority of them, and that's terrific. And who those trusted adults are. Often, it's a parent of a family friend or the teacher. So I think that, again, speaks well to the, to the social emotional. Connectedness, now, don't be alarmed about that 15, 13%, because connectedness and then my teachers caring about me are two very different things. It doesn't surprise me that that's a low score, because a feeling of connected, you know, I don't know why an adolescent would feel connected to adults in their school. But it would be nice if they felt a little bit more connected to the community. So that's something that we may want to keep an eye on. And again, LGBTQ, less so. Here we are with social media, and social media has pluses and minuses. We did find that, as you see, 67% of the students responded saying they felt more connected. But there was a lot of negative outcomes as a result of that, too. And I don't know if you've had a chance to see the surgeon general's social media advisory that came out recently. If not, I can get that to Jen and have that sent to you, because it's excellent, and it'll be on our website. We asked about social media time on social media. The surgeon general advises, recommends no more than three hours a day. As you can see, about a third of the respondents are on social media for more hours. And it's almost become a new addiction that we need to address. Gaming is another issue that I think very similar to social media. There are positives, that feeling connected and feelings of accomplishments, but also didn't get enough sleep, didn't finish my homework. We're going to be doing a webinar on gaming in January or February. We did a pilot program that we had 36 families participate in, and it was reviewed highly. Bullying, I wish bullying wasn't happening at all. It happens more frequently in the middle school than the high school. Online bullying is a serious problem for LGBTQ students. And then we move into mental health. And I think this was really alarming, the percentage of students who are reporting challenges with depression and anxiety. And we're going to see a pattern here with who is being challenged in those ways. So we have more LGBTQ students, more girls than boys are having higher risk rates of anxiety in particular. And then how we compare throughout the state and nationally. Depression is significant among Hispanic and LGBTQ and girls. We see that playing out also in substance use. So not surprising, when you combine combination of variables, those who are depressed also have feelings of not being as connected, not having a trusted adult, not feeling as safe. And so we do know there is a correlation between mental health and substance use. Those who are having mental health challenges are self-medicating, using alcohol, using cannabis, vaping. And there are, while we have a high degree of family rules, which is great, I would love to see the alcohol family rules and the vaping family rules go a little bit higher. And what's interesting is when we compare the student results with the parent results, and the parents in their survey, you know, 90% or more said, oh, yes, we've got family rules, which is not necessarily the case as reported by students. So here we start with the core of the data, and the four core measures. The first one is past 30-day use, and I think this is really good news, or at least it's trending in the right direction. We know that 2021 was an odd year, it was COVID, kids were not congregating. So I'm really pleased to see that substance use did not go above the 2019 data. So in every case, it's lower, which is fabulous news. Here it is, the historic jump between 10th and 11th grade. I have to look to see what those jumps were in the past. I think that's a pretty, pretty wide swing between 10th and 11th grade there with regard to alcohol use. And there you are, you know, more girls than guys who are drinking alcohol in the past 30 days. Cannabis use, same kind of thing. Not so much the discrepancy between genders and cannabis, but definitely in vaping. And honestly, I don't know why, again, you know, it's interesting that we've got this huge jump in 11th grade, and then it goes down in 12th grade. And, you know, we're hoping to do some focus groups, and we can look into that a little bit. Looking at high school alcohol use in special populations, again, LGBT, well, females, and then sort of a wide distribution. And then of LGBTQ compared to just all students, so in all categories, we're seeing a higher substance use with LGBTQ students. So perception of risk is the second core measure. It went down with alcohol, and it went down in vaping compared to 2019. Went up slightly in other areas, but those are the two substances that we really need to focus a lot of work on. It's good to see that marijuana went up, but it's still too low. Peer perception in all areas, I think this is an opportunity where we can engage our youth committee in doing some peer-to-peer, changing the norm type of initiatives. I think a lot of kids want to be helping each other, they just don't know how, or maybe they're just a little nervous about wanting to speak up. But I think this is a real opportunity to be able to do some training and education with our, with our young people. And then perception of parent disapproval has always been high, so we're good there. And then comparing high school substance use to the other towns that use basically the same data bank as Fairfield, where I would say we're pretty much on par. I'm hoping that in time I'll be able to show you Fairfield County compared to Fairfield. And then in terms of location, at home alone, and then at home with a parent present, isn't so bad, but with friends at home, and that could be at a friend's house or having friends over, and then at a party. So to me, this speaks to the need to really educate parents that they really do need to be monitoring a little bit better than they are, particularly at home alone. I think that's, you know, when, when kids are in the basement or in their home, in their bedrooms alone, there's an opportunity for vaping in particular to be happening. And then ease of access, clearly alcohol remains the substance that's the easiest to access. What's interesting is when we compare, students are saying that it's a little less easy than the parents seem to think. I would have thought it to be the other way around, to be perfectly honest, but we're going to work on that, because it's not locked up. In most cases, it's not secure, so this will be one of the initiatives that we're working on this year with, with parents. So I think this is another important message we want to be sure parents know about, is that they do make a difference. And research bears this out over and over again. It's so important for parents to be talking to their kids, and they do, you know, this in the past month, within the past three months, kids, parents are talking to their kids, but they do make a difference. And I think if we can keep sending that message, I think that can be very powerful. This was information from the parent survey. I thought it was interesting that the parents are rating themselves second to their friends, to their child's friend group. And again, we can convince parents that they are frankly their number one influencer on their child's behavior. But I was happy to see that parents felt that they were more influential than social media, so I think that's, that's a good sign. I've kind of gone over the information on the left, but on the information on the right, we've asked this question in the past. I have to admit, I have to look back to see, I think it was a higher percentage of parents who felt that drinking was a normal part of growing up. That's not to say that parents have favorable attitudes about youth drinking, it's just more of a broad lens approach, because I think the data that's really important is looking at that 88% that parents feel that it's, they don't need to be teaching their kids how to drink responsibly. And I think that's beginning to change. In the past, we've, we've heard from parents that, oh, you know, before my child goes to college, I want to be sure they know how to handle their liquor. And then just ending on, I think, a positive note, the school does a great job having clear rules, and parents recognize that around substance use. But I wanted to emphasize, and just so you saw, that there are more teens who are having a mental health challenge than are actually using a substance. And those who are using a substance are using to self-medicate in most cases. And then very quickly, some of the things that we've done and are doing, Fairfield Cares, our grant money is focused purely on drug prevention and reduction, but we've had, we try to do as much as we can around resources around mental health. We are in the process, and I'm really excited about this, our social media phone parents' resource guide, I just saw a second draft of that, that's going to be terrific, and I've had a task force of parents take a look at it, and it's received very positive feedback. So I think that's going to be a nice resource. We provide education and resources. I mean, that's primarily what we do, and we are very active reaching out on a continual basis. And then some of the things that we're going to be working on this year, because I think it's important for you all to know, that working on access with alcohol and dapes, both at home, and working out with the retailers, reaching out to the retailers, is really critical. We're going to be getting our youth much more engaged, we're meeting with them twice a month on a regular basis at the Fairfield libraries. And we've in the past provided resources around quitting, and we're going to continue to do that. And then those Narcan trainings and advocating, and this is something that I would encourage you all to, if you're so moved to, we're going to be engaged in a letter writing campaign to the town planning and zoning commission to prevent commercial cannabis in town, because our kids don't need to have easier access to cannabis. And that is it. Questions?
Thank you so much for your presentation. I will open up to the board for any questions. Thank you for also including the full report. And, you know, I like to have those. But does anyone have any questions? Oh, sorry. Oh, Mrs. Maxon-Kinney.
First of all, thank you for that presentation. I honestly didn't think you were going to be able to move through at the pace that you did, and it was superb, and you absolutely hit it, nailed it in terms of that, so thank you for that. I mean, obviously, a lot of your work is in the community and what have you. Can you tell me, like, where do you see a specific impact on Fairfield Public Schools? Of what will Fairfield Cares be doing or recommending to the schools themselves?
So it's, a lot of that is working with Lori Mediati, who is the health educator. We're going to be providing the Screenagers video to the Ward and Ludlow High Schools, which they'll have for a year, and it's, it's the latest video on vaping and drug use and technology and all of that. I've also forwarded mental health resources to the schools. Engaging our youth will be a big part of it, because they'll be doing a lot of that peer-to-peer outreach initiative. And then, as we have in the past, bringing presentations to the schools, to the parents and to the kids. So it's a, it's a variety of outreach initiatives.
Thank you. Also, a couple of random things regarding social media, that felt more connected with others, just as a suggestion for a future question, but with others locally versus in, you know, Ireland, because I think that that's, there's a lot of false sense of connection with others.
That's, that's an excellent point. And if you read the surgeon general's advisory, he will, in there, he states that the youth are connecting to young people outside of their own community. And I know from my own personal experience with a daughter with special needs, it gave her a community that she didn't have in school, so that was really important. And those kids weren't local.
Right. I'm viewing it as a positive and a negative. I absolutely acknowledge the positive that you are saying, especially if someone's feeling really isolated in, for whatever. really isolated and for whatever reason. But there is also a false sense of connection. So I don't know how to advise on the creation of that in the question, but I would just think it'd be an interesting future data point. Regarding anxiety, how does that get defined so that the students are differentiating? Because I appreciate the phrase persistent anxiety, but having had many conversations with students and my own children, anxiety is not the same thing as I'm nervous for the test I didn't prepare for because I was up gaming all night. And how does the survey make that clear so that the data is useful?
That's a great question. I'm going to need to go back to the specific question of the survey because it's not printed in the report, but I do know that it makes a distinction, just as in depression, we're asking, you know, have you felt sad every day over the past two weeks? Right? So that's a different kind of depression than I, you know, I'm down today. Right? So, yeah.
And then last question is, you know, regarding all of the data that you have for the LGBTQ students, how did, the thing I was most curious about is any comparative? Is there any evidence that we have been doing something to better reach those students, better connect with those students, that even though across the board they are struggling more than non-LGBTQ students, are we doing a better job than we were a few years ago? Do you have any sense of that? And I wouldn't want you to guess, just to be clear, but...
Yeah, the answer is that I don't think we looked at it as detailed. I don't think we looked at the LGBTQ students as detailed. We would need to go back to those surveys and fish that out, which we could do. What we are in the process of doing, though, is collecting data at the state level and national level in comparison to what our local data was showing us.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cannelly?
Thanks so much for this presentation. I have a question. You touched on it briefly, and I know it's here in the more detailed thing, that you do specifically call out the significant difference between male and female in terms of the 30-day alcohol use, that the female is more than 5% more. And just knowing how alcohol affects women more differently and in many ways worse, I just, that's concerning. Has there been any kind of insights? Is this, has it become more pronounced over time? I don't recall it being quite as pronounced, and obviously, since you specifically noted here, it's something that I'm assuming that you've noticed and are concerned about as well.
It is higher. I think that's an opportunity for our youth to really do some peer-to-peer outreach initiatives around. And I, it's also, you know, we've not really looked at as clearly as we have this year, that connection between mental health and substance use. So that's just so much more pronounced this year, so we're going to be looking at that very carefully. And a lot of the, a lot of the information that you're asking is information that we can also glean from focus groups that we're hoping to do so we can go a little deeper into this.
Mrs. Italiani?
Thank you so much for the survey. And, you know, when I was a PTA president, I loved having you come and present survey results to the PTAs and parents. We definitely used it to guide our programming. For the bullying slide, do you have past year's data to go back to see if this is kind of comparable, going back to pre-pandemic? Are we seeing a rise in it, or is it just been around this level? Just looking at the school perspective?
Yeah, I would have to go back. I have not looked back at that, but I can. And I can get back to Christine on that one.
Okay. Do you want to share any information about how anyone in the public can find out more about Fairfield Cares on the town website or...
There's a link.
And all that good stuff, parents, or join the coalition or...
Yes. Oh, thank you for that siglage. So the Fairfield Cares Community Coalition, I know it's not, meets at the most convenient time for parents, sorry about that, but we are virtual too. The third Wednesday of the month from 8:30 to 10 o'clock. We've moved the meetings actually to the first floor conference room over at Sullivan Independence Hall because we found we did need such a large room rather than meeting in the boardroom here. And we have lots and lots of really great social media. We're using social media more and more to get information out. And then our website, we have good information there too. But we welcome parent involvement, and even if you can't make the meetings, I'm always looking for volunteers or helping with projects, staffing resource table, you know, at open houses or community events, and input on ideas for speakers. So always want parent involvement.
Okay. Thank you so much, Kathy. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. If the board does not mind, I'm going to ask for approval to move item 6B up for our next item in the interest of our head principal, who is here on this item. He doesn't have to wait for the rest of our business, so that would be the adoption of the graduation requirements policy. Is there any objection to me moving that up so that Dr. Hatzis can join us? Okay, thank you very much. All right, then we are going to move to item 6B, adoption of policy 6146, requirements for graduation. Well, recognition of the Board of Education dot policy 6146, requirements for graduation. Can I get a motion? This is Maxine Cannelly, seconded by Mr. Asa. Mrs. Cannelly, do you want to introduce us to this item?
Sure. So I had given the board a heads up a few weeks ago that this is something that we were imminently taking up and that they might have been hearing some buzz about, and so this appears before you now. So the main driver of the change was an understanding or a new understanding that we, as a board, had not been interpreting the state's intent correctly via policy and our graduation requirements, specifically regarding art. We had inherited wording, when Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Jacobson, and I first did this work on the graduation policy, we'd inherited work from a previous policy that lumped fine arts and vocational arts together. We moved that into policy. Long story short, the state has a much more specific definition of arts and intend that there be a specific arts requirement as of the class of 2024. Now, if that resonates with you, that is this group of current seniors. And when the policy committee became aware of it, thank you, Mrs. Jacobson, staff immediately did some homework on it and discovered that, yes, that was the case, that we needed to address this. And so the changes that you are looking at here, some of it I don't think is overly alarming or controversial, I should say. What we have done through these changes here are to break out the current juniors and seniors versus the sophomores versus the freshmen and beyond. And what you see there with that .25, what we were struggling with, because if you look ahead to the class of 2027 and in fact with the class of 2026, it's the full .5 credit. What our staff has been doing, Dr. Zavajancik in particular, has been looking back at our numbers of how many seniors, if we were looking at their, how many of them had fulfilled this graduation requirement? And the numbers that came out at our last policy meeting were concerning. And so the Dr. Zavajancik has gone back to it, has conferred more with state officials on it, and we are able to widen our definition of what is going to qualify for the arts. At this point in time, we have it so that 86% of the low students are meeting it, 88% at Ward are meeting it, but Dr. Zavajancik is continuing to work to see if a few additional courses, as an example culinary arts, could that satisfy this? And so this is not a final number. 86% represents 58 seniors, that's 44 at Ward. And so the idea of the .25, what we're trying to work in there is the wiggle room, that we don't want this to be a reason that anyone is not graduating, but that doesn't mean we can deny the obligation to fulfill what the state intended, which is that everyone is taking art. And so there is the potential, and this would be happening obviously very quickly, that if something new had to be created that was only a half, excuse me, a quarter of a credit, this gave that wiggle room to that. Because with, for example, with the numbers we first received, we literally didn't have enough open seats in our arts courses. Never mind the room and the schedule, never mind the fact that all of these students have already been scheduled. So this, where we currently stand is a vast improvement. I did check with Dr. Zavajancik. At this point, these specific seniors have not been spoken to yet, and of course, they started class today because he is still working on seeing about qualifying those few additional courses. He is keenly aware of that the policy committee and by extension, I know the full board, would be interested in this happening as quickly as possible because in all fairness, we need to have that conversation with whatever that number of seniors is, that number who is left. So I think that explains a lot of the changes, again, regarding the arts, some of the languages being eliminated because it affected last year's graduating seniors. One other change that you will see is that the mastery content in terms of their having shown content, the assured content experiences that we had worked on previously for English and Social Studies, Science and Math and other, is still a graduation requirement. However, it is no longer coming with a credit. So that, that was something that the state allowed in the recent legislative change, that we no longer, when they instituted the financial literacy expectation, which we'll also see incorporated into here, that the state's idea of an exchange was, we're requiring you to do this, but we relieve you of the burden of a 1.00 FTE requirement. And I'll just leave that part there. Additionally, there's the addition now of the FAFSA requirement. Very important there, I'd like to point out, is that second part of the paragraph, which is talking about on and after March 15th of each year, that the head principal may complete that waiver if there's been a good faith effort done to contact parents. And of course, there is also option three, which is the completion of a waiver. So that was an awful lot to throw at you. You had the marked up copy as well as the clean copy. We are asking, unless the board objects, we, I don't like to do this frequently, but we are asking for a vote on this tonight so that we can move forward. But at this point, I'll take questions. Again, Dr. Zavajancik and Mr. Hatzis are, Dr. Hatzis are here, so that please feel free, you know, that they can come up as well. Mr. Peterson?
I think this may ultimately be a question for the superintendent, but I'll just say at first, I have no intention of voting against this. I think this is excellent, and I understand why we missed what we did back in, whatever that was, 2018, 2019. My fundamental question with this, and I appreciate that we are trying to adhere to the letter of the law. The final line in this policy says, "The final authority to determine graduation eligibility rests with the chief academic officer." I know that we're attempting to shoehorn in kids that are taking things, but this is ultimately our mistake. And in the end, can't we use that clause as a escape hatch to make sure that anyone, for whatever reason, can't get this credit, can still graduate?
We asked Dr. Zavajancik exactly that question, so I think it's best that he communicate the answer himself.
Good evening. James Zavajancik, Chief Academic Officer. I did ask our counsel that question about appeals within the policy. I cannot override the state legislator's intent. I can look at substitutions that qualify as courses that perhaps might not be in our program of studies or might satisfy a requirement that satisfies the legislation that we have not determined.
It still leaves open the possibility of somebody falling through cracks and not graduating because of this.
We are going to look at every student that's left after we are done here. If there is substitutions, we will make the connections with that.
I get what you're saying. I just, again, I feel like, I feel like this is our error. It seems like it's pretty clearly our error, and students that have, you know, arranged their course loaded in a specific way in order to fulfill the requirements that we asked them to do should not be penalized. And I just, to whatever degree you can use that to make sure that nobody is unduly penalized, I would appreciate it.
And I'll follow up on that. That was very, very much a frequent comment at policy.
We was a very liberal in our interpretation.
I just wanted to thank the staff that worked on this. They were incredibly responsive. This was a lot of work for them, and it was really detail-oriented, and I'm just really appreciative that they are working so diligently to make sure that they capture the success of all our graduates. Was obviously very important to our goals in our policy meeting, and I'm appreciating the board looking at this today and hopefully being able to respond to it. I just have one question. In terms of the ad period for, you know, going into day two, what level of flexibility will students have to, I mean, how much flexibility will they have to add courses over the next week or so? Would you mind just commenting on that? Thank you.
Sure. To Mr. Testane's point, we're going to be liberal in the identification, in the application of, and in the process, in the standards we have for those.
So appreciated. Thank you.
Actually, I was wondering, and I think it might help enlighten that, I don't know if Dr. Hatzis would be willing to come up and just speak to what that process would look like with the students or anything to that effect. And also maybe a little bit more color to the idea of what a .25 arts could look like. And again, we were definitely being creative with our thinking on that.
Thank you very much. So the process would be that we would just start with a letter to the families and follow-up phone calls to those who would not, who, after the final decisions are made about what courses would qualify, you know, just to kind of apprise them of the situation, explain what happened. And hopefully, by that time, we will also have a list of opportunities for them to meet the credit. Some possibilities would be coming to the board with a request for sort of speedy approval of a new course, since the board approves all courses, in a, for a .25 credit, what that would look like. It would be the equivalent of a semester course that meets for a mini or a full 85-minute course that met for a term or a quarter. The problem or the challenge there, of course, is that with students' schedules already set, and especially in the second semester of their senior year, they may have free periods, but they're all over the map, you know, in all eight periods of our day. So to be able to staff that would be extremely difficult. So probably the, one of the more popular solutions would be an independent study. So we would have to come up the criteria. We currently have an independent study program for students to receive credit in an area of passion that they like. There's a set of criteria, so we would start with that definition and go from there, but then, of course, gear it specifically toward meeting the definition of an arts course. So that would be, that would be our approach at this stage of the game. We still have a lot of planning to do around it.
Any other questions?
The only, the last thing I would say is that, because I'm hoping this will be voted on and approved, I'll just say to, I guess, through the chair to Dr. Zavajancik or through the chair to Mr. Testane, actually, is that I would very much hope that, or to the chair, if we could have a specific agenda item at our next regular meeting with just a specific report on the feedback for this. Or actually, I should take that back. It also could possibly be in a Friday packet, just, I would think it would be very helpful for us to get explicit follow-up to this.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Oh, Mrs. Italiani?
Another question, but I don't know the status of the town's art commission, but if we're looking at independent study, that might be a resource. There was some talk about a mural being painted at town at some point. Trying to think of just creative ways that maybe we can just engage these students. And I will be obviously supporting this tonight and support whatever efforts need to be done to get these kids the requirements they need. Thank you for your work on this and to the Policy Committee as well.
Okay. If there's no other, thank you, guys. If there is no other questions or comments on the board, I will take it to the public. This is a voting item. Is there any public comment on this voting item? If not, I will take it back to the board. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
And thank you for being willing to move this up on the agenda.
Sure. No problem. I was just about to go to the next policy, but I'm going to back up now. I'm going to find a update and continue discussions of facilities, redistricting scenarios, and waterfall projects. I know that's a lot of items, but I wanted to give us the space, space to be able to talk about the waterfall or scenarios and where we are going. I think we have some decisions to make and a path to go down. So this is really an open item for us to be able to do just what it says, whether it be on the waterfall or the redistricting scenario. So I think that for the community, for this board, for our superintendent, for central office, for the state even, we need to move at this point and decide what we're going to do in order to meet the mandate that we're required to mandate and how we're going to go about that for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and beyond for town and our students. So this is really an open item. I don't have a mechanical process for this tonight, but I really am interested to hear from each board member in terms of, you know, where are you at? And where do you want to go? Because we need to move. And I just want to, for the public's sake, we have two meetings in September planned. Always, I can always add more. First reading slated for early October, mid-October, and votes. So I just wanted to let everyone know that we do, we have a couple of meetings at this point slated left to review items and move forward. So that'll open up, Mrs. Grover.
Yeah, well, I'll just bring up again the grandfathering piece of this puzzle. Because, I mean, that does, it's kind of a chicken or the egg type thing, because obviously we need a plan to figure out. But that said, if we know that there are serious concerns about the ability to grandfather, period, regardless of how much, that is something that I think we need to consider. Because I know, you know, we have a lot of debate about, you know, causing the least amount of disruption. And while I get that that can obviously tie the consultant's hands, but I think it's important to note that the more disruption, the more opportunity for grandfathering, the more children who are moved, there will be more grandfathering, which will, A, have costs, but also for me, it's purely about the logistics. Would we be able to? Even if cost is not an option, not that I'm saying that we'll just spend whatever, but I, I do think it's important for us to understand, since we are constantly having discussions about bus shortages, driver shortages with the blessing they have now. So just what role might that play? Has first student been consulted? Has the Transportation Department been consulted? Are there any limits that we have in terms of how much we will be able to grandfather?
So to your point, we are, as of today, about ten bus drivers short. And buses are running, as we would say, efficiently because they are pretty well assigned. But could that be impactful with the number of kids that are grandfathered? Of course, it could. It could have all kinds of effects. I think being more specific as to which grade levels are going to be impacted with the grandfathering would be helpful. Is it going to be families? Is it going to be just certain grades? I know we talked about fifth. I know we talked about eighth, and we talked about twelfth graders. But what will happen, the siblings that may be in, for a fifth grader, a second and third grader that may be in the school as well, do we grandfather them as well? Because this then could have larger impacts, I think, on the capacity of the buses, the need for more buses. And if there's a driver shortage, which there continues to be across the country, but specifically here, across the region, we had some concerns talking today. First student has recently begun a new contract with Westport. So that's going to be competing for the same driver pools. That's, that's problematic.
Follow up on that. So what we put in our charge was fifth, eighth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, actually, to get those numbers. And we did get them for all except for B. Just on the transportation piece, I know there's other programs in town, not programs, but when students go to different schools for various reasons, we don't necessarily provide transportation. Do we have to provide transportation? And it's just purely legal question at this point, not advocating for or against, but do we legally have to provide that in a grandfathering situation?
We can have to look into that and find out. The other option would be grandfathering without transportation. That would, I'm not saying that's what I'm supporting. I'm just saying, that's the other option.
We can provide it for the math academy. And I know that we have policy for intra-district transfers. When there's an agreement, we don't provide transportation either for that. So there must be something where you don't, in a voluntary nature of a situation, there must be something in there.
That's the initial information that we've gotten, that you need to provide transportation for your guidelines, distance guidelines within your district. And then for special cases where students are placed out of district through the PPT process, that transportation is provided to those out-of-district placement locations.
Mrs. Kelly. I understand that everybody wants to talk about grandfathering, but I'm still going to argue that I don't think it's the time to talk about it. Not less than an hour ago, we were talking about the potential of not doing anything and going back and asking for an extension. So I think the idea of wasting time, in my opinion, talking about grandfathering and what grades and how much and who are we going to, and who are we not, and who are we going to make exceptions for? We have so many other bigger questions to answer right now that I'm sorry. I know people want to talk about it, just like they want to see street maps and they want to see all these things. But right now, we have bigger questions. Are we, are we going ahead? Are we doing a scenario? Are we not doing a scenario? Are we going to tell the state that we can't do anything? Like, those are the questions that we need to be having and talking about right now. And I'm sorry, but I personally think grandfathering is way on the bottom of that list.
Okay. So why don't you kick us off with what you'd like to do?
I'm happy. I know you don't want to hear it, but if the choice is nothing or doing one of the scenarios, I would opt for one A or even four at this point. I have no interest in going back to the, to Slam and waiting another six weeks to get another scenario that all of us will rip apart, will get another sea of emails from one side of town saying that they love it, and another side of town saying that they don't love it for conflicting reasons. And we're going to, we're going to get nowhere. We're, we're going to get nowhere. We're going to end up here. So really, I'm at the point where if we're all going to say, hmm, I don't like this, I like, I don't like this, or I already know I'm not going to like what's coming back in another four or six weeks, then we are wasting our time, we are wasting everyone else's time, we are wasting Slam's time, and we are causing unnecessary anxiety for everyone, ourselves included. And I'm at the point where, I don't want to use profanities, but it's time to do something or get off the pot. And today's the day for me. So that being said, do I have, this is the perfect solution? No. But if we leave today, still in this ambiguous zone of maybe, maybe, but still holding to this deadline, I think we're doing everybody a disservice.
Mr. Peterson.
Just to go around the horn, I hear what Mike Zubo was saying about all the strings that we're trying to knit together. So we're going to have to do what I think the board was always going to have to do is prioritize those strings. The main threads are racial balance, utilization, and special programming. Four B is the worst of all those plans. I, I, is a complete nonstarter for me. The, I have issues with four. And the, the thing that I'm going back to now is, we can't not prioritize racial balance, ultimately. The plan that's best with that is one A. The plan that's best with special programming is one A. The thing that one A has against is utilization, which Slam has been talking about, well, you're not full at twenty-one kids per classroom. Although we know, everyone at this table knows that it's the distribution of kids and the number of teachers, the number of sections that's most important. But all of that said, I don't know how we cannot look at one A at this point. I, I live in fear of what the state is going to do if we, if we punt. I don't think that, as, I think as Mr. Testane has said, the magnet idea is not a magic bullet at this point. I kind of think we have to look at one A. If, if we're looking at the things that are in front of us, one A is the, is the number.
Just on one A? That's it?
I can't see any way around it.
Okay. Jim Maxon, McKinley.
I'm still struggling and neither understand nor am processing Mr. Zubo's answers to Mr. Asa regarding what would seem, I, I don't, if this, I, I come back to Mr. Asa's point of if this were a blank slate, this was a brand-new town, everyone was plunked exactly where they are, draw the lines so that we don't have a racial imbalance issue and we're balanced with terms of utilization. I just, I, I, I understand that maybe there are a few things we need to take off the charge through a memo. I just can't believe that they can't do it. I, I'm not understanding that. And I didn't want to keep belaboring the point because I thought Mr. Asa asked the question and asked it again and asked it well. So there is a four C that I'm curious about. I want to know that it can't happen. I want to know that our idea of a, of a scenario four on steroids of more, not fewer, of townwide, so that we are relieved of this topic for years to come, aside from an update that tells us we are A-OK. I just, I, I, until I can, and maybe, Mr. Testane, maybe I need to meet with you tomorrow and, and, and explain my idea. And you can tell me why, if there's any conversation that you've had that makes clear why this can't happen. I don't want to keep using up our time on it. And again, just to be clear, it's not that I'm looking to do something, but I am looking to fix racial imbalance. I am looking to take this so that the next time someone does a Google search on this, you know, five years from now, it was a topic that got solved on our watch during our tenure. So that's the problem I'm having, is that ultimately I'm still on four as being the one that the community can best understand. Obviously, there's the fine-tuning of the streets. But a couple of questions I had down, again, I know this wouldn't be significant, but I don't know, and Mr. Testane, I apologize, I should have sent this question in advance. Something like the Early Literacy Academy. Has that helped the racial imbalance percentage at McKinley? Or has it actually hurt the racial imbalance number?
We're looking, I'm looking at that today. And it really, it doesn't do much either way. It has no really impact.
Okay. Good to know that. You know, that's a program which I didn't understand why it wasn't being slotted into Stratfield if we're taking the ECC out. That seemed to be a logical place that kept it centrally located. I mean, these are kind of the kinds of questions I'd be happy to follow up with you on later. Right now, like, right now, how many ECC classrooms do we need? Not projected, how many do we need right now?
Award and five more.
So if we did five classrooms at Holland Hill, for example, or Burr or North Stratfield, if we picked a place for five classrooms, because and, and that, I am extremely appreciative to Mr. Mancusi and yourself for five, finally explaining that five number at our last meeting, because now that, that makes sense to me. But if we put five in one school and did not, to Mrs. Vitale's point, did not put five at Jennings, but instead moved Jennings up on the waterfall so that we could make five appropriately sized ECC classrooms there in addition to the building renovation, wouldn't that be a possibility?
Yeah, it would have to happen quickly because, as I think we reported at the last, the special meeting last week, we're anticipating forty-one students that would normally be moving on to kindergarten to stay with us. And I think to everyone's agreement, as we discussed, that those are four going on five-year-olds, they should have a full-day program, which also then creates the need for the additional space because it is a full day.
And duly noted. Now, out of curiosity, at Stratfield right now, is there a CLC?
Yes.
There is? Is that new? Okay. So I missed that. I apologize. I don't remember having the four classrooms. So again, then that would be something I would advocate for, would be moving Jennings up on the waterfall if it's now, and I hear Mrs. Jacobson's point that she articulated the last meeting, that doing that is at the, puts our HVAC, you know, projects. And so that would be part of the discussion. But I at least would be interested in knowing if that was possible. Because I don't think it's ideal to have a two-section school at Jennings. That's exactly what we've been trying to move away from. It's exactly what we're trying to solve at Dwight, for example. But then would Burr, which has been underutilized, be a better location for the ECC? So I, I'd want to get back at that information again of, I like that Jennings is centrally located, but if we have it at Holland Hill and if we have it at Ward, we could go farther afield. So why not Burr? Or why not possibly North Stratfield, but I think more Burr? Because we know that that's the western side of town. So that's a long way of saying, I still have a lot of questions, which I'm happy to meet with you to get answers to or direction on within twenty-four hours, but I don't mean to challenge you.
No, no, no. It's fine. Because I know Angelica and I have had a lot of discussions, to your point, about moving kids. So you move forty from here to Sherman and then forty out of Sherman. The fear is, because you don't know what grade levels those children are necessarily, it could trigger then more sections than we currently have in those new buildings, which would then cause more problems. That's the big one. Because there are situations already this year, as you'll see later in the enrollment report, that we have additional sections that we didn't budget for, but we are approaching at other schools. So five kids could trigger two more sections, depending on what grade levels and where they're enrolled. So unless we're willing to extend the classroom size, which I know that's not a good idea, and I don't think anyone would support that, this could be problematic.
When you say extend, do you mean increase?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I don't know, Mrs. Jacobson, if you feel like you've gotten an answer from me. So it's, I'm still back on four, but I, I'm just, I'm not going to feel comfortable with switching to something else until I have this swing answered. Because I just didn't feel like he was completely, I, I understand he said that it was difficult. Well, so then what can we take off the plate to make it less difficult for him? If we are, for example, prioritizing racial imbalance, then what does that swing look like? And so that, that's where I am.
If you can get those questions in the morning, I know you have.
A valuable PD to attend, but I'll fit it in.
Because we're hoping for a late morning, midday conversation with Slam.
Okay.
I'm thinking, because I'm just at a loss, quite honestly. I, I think, for me, since I came on the board, racial imbalance and solving racial imbalance hasn't meant to hill of beans. Because I just, I don't, I don't believe the state should be telling us what to do, but we know that they are. So I've come around to that, knowing the consequences of a ten-four B and a potential court ruling, which would basically put us back here saying, you don't, you don't have to try and solve it, you need to. And I worry about what that would yield. And who knows when that would be? And I, I might not even be on the board if that was two years from now. So I, I have to say that I'm, I'm still with Mrs. Max and Crenelli on the philosophy of 4, but I think on handcuffing them and saying that the prioritization needs to be to get the racial imbalance number lower. And I've been public about this. I don't care about it being below 20%. I think the low twenties would work and based on the trends over time, I, I think if we got it in the low twenties, we would be there. And then my, you know, Mr. Zubas said, what, what are your priorities? What are your musts? So that's the, that's the priority. And then my, my secondary would be solving the ECC dilemma. And I think that we need to have it clustered. We need those five classrooms now. So I think that needs to come into play. And everything else, we need to figure out. Once we get the plan, once we know the space, then we put programs where they can fit and where we can best serve the children. And then I have, from the start, I did not support moving the air conditioning projects. I was in the minority of, of moving them up into the phased approach versus leaving them on the waterfall the way they were. I understand the concerns of air quality post-COVID, but I would prioritize the building projects in there. And, and I've said that there's no money tree. We, we need to be cognizant, we need to be partners, we need to be good stewards with the town and sharing the, the bonding. But I would, I would prioritize a building project that included building either a one-site ECC or a site, a secondary site that is big enough to sustain the next decade and beyond. So we're not like a Dariann who did a one-site ECC and now is already outgrowing it. So I'm a 4 with prioritizing racial imbalance into the low twenties and the five classrooms and my second, with my secondary and also to the waterfall point, reprioritizing ourselves there.
I ask for clarification, Mr. Asa. You said racial imbalance and then low twenties, but that's what 4 already has.
No, that, that, what SLAM has been saying is their, their good or, or optimal is 20% or below 20%. So I'm saying 4 that we have now.
Yeah.
And doing it in a way that doesn't move the three kids here and the three kids there.
Okay. So just, I'm so sorry. I'm just confused because you said, you said low twenties was fine, but that's what 4 is now. So you want below 20 instead?
No, I'm fine with low twenties. I'm, I'm saying I'm okay with 4 with some tweaks that aren't the disaster that 4B was.
What is that that you don't like?
I'm saying that the constraints that they've had with the, with the five ECC classrooms here and five there alleviating some of those constraints. So focusing on the five for now.
So not, so you're saying not the nine ECC classrooms?
You're saying the number of classrooms that we originally told them. Yes.
Okay.
And, and also I will, I will say, I agree with Mrs. Kelly and Mr. Peterson, that I think it is clear that 1A did solve the issue. But before going to that, for me, it's, it's having them not come up with a whole new scenario, but relook at 4 with the priorities changed.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Thank you, Mrs. Guernsey. I'm sorry, the clock's not on the wall anymore and I can't see it. So I think we are heading, heading towards, so I am going to ask for a motion to suspend the rules and extend our meeting because we need to get through this meeting till Mr. Asa has suggested 1A. Can I get a motion? Mr. Asa, I'll second it. All in favor? Mrs. Kelly, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Jacobson, Mrs. Vitale? It's only four? Mrs. Max and Crenelli, motion passes six. All against? Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale and Mrs. Guernsey, motion passes six-three. Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Guernsey?
I'm sorry, was there something? Oh.
Yes. What would you like to do for 24, 25?
Okay, so just to start with the waterfall, I maintain my commitment to the prioritization of the HVAC projects. It's really important to me. I'm hearing that it's important to the community. So, you know, while I'd like to see new buildings added to that list, my priority is with the HVAC. So in terms of these scenarios, I just found tonight's meeting actually extremely illuminating. You know, I, all along, I've been pretty cynical about this and I came to this week hoping that 4B would have some kind of nice surprise. To what I was surprised, like Mr. Asa said, that if we redrew the lines from nothing, that it still wasn't solvable. So I feel pretty, even though, you know, I was trying not to be cynical, was pretty defeated. So I, I can't support any of these scenarios and trying, like I said, to be open to this new one. I'm not. I, you know, my priority is racial imbalance at this point. Like if we have to look at that list of everything we're trying to do, that's going to be number one. That's really my only priority right now because all the rest seem to involve a lot of conversations we don't have time to have. Or I'm not sure if we have time to have. So I think for me, I'd like very much to ask the board to reconsider visiting the magnet option. And I almost don't want to call it magnet option because I feel like there's a negative connotation to that at this point, just that word and just the idea of revisiting that. There was so, so much optimism from the superintendent when I first heard about this. And I think it's, I think it would be really exciting. I, I don't really see what else we have to look forward to here that doesn't hurt a large number of families. So I'm pretty excited about the idea that the magnet could be something that people would look forward to. And so I don't really know how this fits into this conversation though. So I'm just magnet or special programming at McKinley School.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, um, so I I don't support 1A. I, I said that before, but I just wanted to reiterate. I just, for me, it's, I understand the racial imbalance aspect of it, but for me, the negatives of the, you know, basically taking a school offline, it just concerns me. In terms of 4, 4B is definitely no, but 4 as well, I am concerned just because I'm still not sure we totally know how this will look, what it will cost, whether the things will fit in the buildings, the numbers, the sections. The question that you asked, it concerns me that they're not down to that granular level because I just don't want this board to approve a plan and then have everything go through. And I understand, again, this is this chicken and egg thing where I understand you don't want to do tremendous amount of work on a multiple of plans if only one or none end up going that way. But that said, we do need to know these things and it does worry me that we may paint ourselves into a corner and not have the space. Or that we might not be able to, and I'm sorry to bring it up again, but we might not be able to grandfather student. I mean, that is important. That is part of this. And, and so it's really hard to say I can definitively approve something or go down that road if I don't understand all the repercussions of it because this will be impacting a tremendous number of students and families in this district. And I realize that any of these plans will do that, but I just worry that, that with 4, we just don't know what it will cost and what it will look like and how it will impact the buildings that these students are moving into. So that said, you know, again, I know that K235 is dead, but just wanted to bring that up one last time. And I also support the magnet, the idea of the magnet as well just because I cannot get behind any of these other plans right now as they stand.
Right. So none of the scenarios that are before us, just at this point? Yeah.
I mean, if, if Mrs. Max and Crenelli meets with Mr. Testane and they have a conversation with SLAM and they can come up with something with a 4 that makes more sense, I, I'm certainly willing to, I'm not saying I'm not going to look at anything, but what we have right now before us, I would not be able to vote. If we were asked tonight to vote on one of these plans that we have right now, I would not vote yes in favor of them.
I'm just going to draw attention back to this extra sheet of paper and I keep having to keep forgetting about it. And just for people to ponder that as well, the one, two and three here for the 4B, which almost would be like a 4C too. So not to forget about this. I know we don't have it built out, but I might need time to process that, but that's there too. But sorry, Mrs. Vitale?
I do not support 1A. I don't think we should be taking elementary school offline, especially in that area of town where it just seems that smaller houses are getting replaced by bigger houses. That's where the hotspot was in terms of new families moving in. I don't think that we, we possibly don't even have a read on what the number of students that are going to be coming in from that area of town. So that is still a non-starter for me. Still against three in the satellite zone. I consider 4B really a version of 3B with the satellites, so not supportive of that. I come back to the magnet just because I don't think this board really did due diligence. It is in our plan. We had a presentation and then it pretty much did not move forward. We're hearing, we've heard from, as Ms. Kelly said, from people from all across town, everyone likes the status quo right now, which is a testament to our, our communities, our, our principals and our teachers and our PTAs for creating that environment. The magnet as proposed by Mr. Testane had a phased-in approach. Now, I appreciate the state might not like that because it's not going to, we're not going to be balanced in 2024, but we will be taking action if we move that forward. That would, in essence, grandfather everybody. Everybody would stay where they are. And when we're not talking about grandfathering, we are 10 bus drivers short right now. We budgeted for what? Two less than what ideal was? We, so we are already 12 less than what we want. We've been getting emails, concerns about long bus rides. Last year, our kids were on the bus close to an hour because of the bus driver shortage. So just keeping it real in terms of expectations of grandfathering, none of us could be totally supportive. And right now, it's not looking very likely that we will be able to deliver on that. The magnet program, everybody stays where they are, we phase it in. And I understand that there was not buy-in, there wasn't a lot of emails, but to be fair, we had a 10-minute presentation without any board discussion, without whether or not it could be a neighborhood base, whether or not the programming would be more of interest. So I would ask if we're having a community conversation next week, that members of the community who are out there and you have kids that aren't in kindergarten yet, would you send your kids to a magnet program at McKinley? And if you would, please come to that meeting and share what kind of magnet program that would be. I absolutely understand. I mean, we've been talking about magnets and why other boards did not move it forward. I think that having a magnet program and expecting third graders to leave their home school to go to a magnet program to solve racial imbalance, absolutely, that would not work. This is a different approach. I don't know of any other district that took the phased-in approach the state would need to buy into. But Mr. Testane, you know what? Shaming you because you saw me on this. You got me excited only that you made me, you know, it sounded like you had spoken to members of, maybe not the state board, but your colleagues at the state level that were supportive. And when we talk about the future of education, the future of jobs in Connecticut, it's innovation. And what do we want our district to look like in 10 years from now? What jobs are we preparing our kids for? What world are we sending not-yet kindergarteners out for? And does our, does our district provide programming for that? And if we're all confident then that we do and everything's good, then let's look at 4. If we're not sure, then think about what we might be able to offer. Because now is an opportunity to move the needle on that as well. In terms of the Capitol waterfall, I attended the meeting, the, the working group today with Ms. Jacobson. I think you should probably share some information of what came out of that in terms of reiterating the 12.5 town and, well, actually, I'll do it for you right now, school district, but there's an appreciation of Jennings and Dwight. Those are still priorities for me, those two buildings. I don't want to, I want to, right now, we kind of push them off because the board fast-tracked the HVAC. I think we need to look at bringing them forward and we need to work conversations at the town level, was figuring out the funding mechanism to do that looking forward. And that's part of the conversation as well. Part of those building renovations, absolutely to have a more consolidated childhood center. You want to do it all right now? Now's the chance to really have that conversation. If we can't do it all, racial imbalance is my number one priority. Thank you.
Let me ask you a question though. Racial imbalance is your number one priority, but okay with it not happening in year one?
It is not, I'm okay with it not happening in year one. We have been waiting 16 years. I think that we need to move the needle. And in terms of McKinley, I appreciate that in order for some sort of specialized program to be at that school, we're going to have to move kids out. But every plan before us, we're going to have to move kids out. So that's just, you know, the nature of the beast right now. And I think that we just needed to do it in a way that moves our district forward. And if, I'm not looking for, if least disruption, I don't think is necessarily a bad thing here, if we can do it thoughtfully and achieve the goals that the majority of this board wants to achieve.
Mrs. R, oh, I'm sorry.
I wanted to follow up on that. In my opinion, the magnet as it was proposed to us is effectively 1A, but a slow painful death of McKinley. If you're going to phase in everybody in kindergarten and start it as a magnet, five years later, you're going to start first, second, third, and then you're telling me in fifth grade, if I understand it correctly, that, then you've basically repurposed McKinley in five years to be just a magnet school.
With elementary students in it.
That's not the way it was presented, was it?
Yes. It would still be an elementary school. It has, it has K through fifth grade in it, but only magnet program.
Not the neighborhood. Not the neighborhood school.
So, excuse me, there would be a percentage of neighborhood students that would be automatically accepted and then the remaining seats, which would have to be significant, probably around 40%. So in year one, 40% of the neighborhood kindergarteners that would be scheduled to go to McKinley would have to go somewhere else. In year two, that would build, right?
Right.
So
Yeah.
The only danger to it is in year one, you may have under-enrolled 40% of kindergarten if, or some percentage, if there's not an interest of those parents. That's, that's the danger of it.
Right. No, and I understand that, but I also know that there's a lot of people sitting at this table who've been complaining about moving people for special programming and that's exactly what this magnet school is doing. And I just want to point that out.
Sorry, Mrs. Vitale.
Thank you. You know, what 4B, what getting 4B did for me is make things very clear. It was such a mess. And we can keep doing this. We can keep moving in circles, asking for a 4C or another four version of this, or what if? There's always going to be another what if. And it's time to make a decision. We've gotten scenarios and the one that solves all of our problems is 1A. And I'm not really sure where the magnet thing is coming back around for. I mean, the majority of emails that we've received from parents are that they want to stay exactly where they are. Like, what makes us think that people are going to opt into a magnet program at McKinley after we've just gotten emails from almost every school in the district that they want to stay exactly where they are? I don't know why everybody thinks somehow making McKinley a magnet school, which by the way, not to mention McKinley's a magnet school, which by the way, not to mention, McKinley's been, McKinley families have been very clear, they don't want a magnet school. So let's not forget all those emails we received from McKinley families. So to me, we can keep making this more complicated, asking for more scenarios and more options and more this and more that, and what about this and what about that? Or we can deal with what we have in front of us. And that, to me, is solving racial imbalance, solving utilization, and solving the ECC. And it's no secret that the ECC is one of my top priorities. Because this program deserves one location. We keep talking about it like it's a hot potato. It gets rejected from every school community because nobody wants it. These kids need, these kids need an effective early intervention program. They need a home. This, this directly affects their entire educational experience for the rest of their lives. We talk so much in this district about having the best classes to offer and the best test scores, and where our kids go to school, and the best drama department, and the best music department, and we never prioritize our early intervention program and our preschool, which arguably is the most important for all of those things. So to me, one A is the direction this board should go in. And I know that it will upset people. Everything we've looked at has upset people. Every possible scenario upsets someone. And I get it. This, these are all difficult and horrible conversations to have, but I think that that, to me, is the direction we should be going in and just making a decision.
Okay, my turn. Thank you. Pardon? Oh, sorry, Mrs. Vitale. Mrs. Vitale, you're right that no one wants to move, but I think that the magnet program went the phase, and I think it's important to recognize that we're not asking anybody who's currently in elementary school to move, that they would be making the choice right from the start that that would be their school. And I understand that McKinley is not, and to Ms. Guernsey's point, maybe calling it a magnet is the wrong thing. The point that I was just trying to make that I don't think that the board really discussed enough. And your, your comment about schools not welcoming the ECC, if that is true, then we just had a school climate survey today, that that needs to be addressed. Because that shouldn't, that should not, I'm not saying true or not, but as we're starting the school, new school year, that should not be the case. There's been discussion at this board table from board members who don't want to displace neighborhoods and neighborhood schools for special programming. That's the ECC. That's what we're talking about. Then there's discussion about displacing future McKinley families for special programming in the form of a magnet school. Two different things. One could be STEAM and a drama department, and one could be early intervention classrooms for special ed students. It's infuriating to listen to it as a sped parent who advocates for special education in this district, because there is a clear line between what some find acceptable and some don't. Our priority should be early intervention, effective early intervention, and doing it to the best of our capabilities for all of our young children, to give them the best shot at life and the best shot at independence as they move through our school system. So I understand that, no, actually, I don't understand. I do not understand why we are talking about a magnet school program right now where we have no information. It's just going to take more time. It doesn't solve almost any of our problems. It's just something we're throwing out there. I don't get it. Not when we're talking about what we are focused on, which is supposed to be racial imbalance, utilization, and the ECC. Wish I'd kind of gone before. All right. So for myself, I'm trying to stick to what this board actually passed back in January. And I know that it seems that too many ingredients in this pot has led to some issues in being able to get back what we wanted to see, or at least what I wanted to see. I don't think that it's a matter of a question for this board of whether or not we care to prioritize racial imbalance or not. That just has to be it. I mean, we don't really have a choice in that matter at this point. I'm not going to pick on Mr. Peterson's comment before is the best scenario for that, but I would counter that actually three was the best in that metric. I hear you, and I hear many people. I value all our kids and all of our programs, from Math Academy to ECC to anything else that we might need, to Walter Fitzgerald or anything else. I can't go back to the days where we were repurposing schools, closing schools, driving up utilization rates, when I have specifically asked if anyone working on this, does any of these plans fit, which to my estimation, they don't. So I am interested in fixing four, actually fixing it, which may mean a disagreement on how it gets fixed, because I am not for clustering programming. Number two, anyone, 21, 20 years ago, in that audience, I stood up and said, if you make that school an IB magnet school, I will send my kids there. And I was told 20 years ago, it was too expensive, or whatever, I mean, not that long, a while ago. So that has been something that I've been interested in a very long time. And I think that the state also wants us to look at, you know, they're not telling us that we have to use kids to solve this. I think that they are interested in voluntary options. I am with fixing four, which I'm not sure we agree on how to fix four, and the magnet. Now, as for the waterfall, I did come from Capitol. We went to Capitol, the Capitol Planning Work Group reconvened today. And yes, the numbers were reiterated around the split. So that was reconfirmed. I did give a little update about where we are in terms of this process and the challenges that we're facing, and that we did start out this conversation when we were doing Capitol planning back in last January, or last year, thinking, you know, can we operate with 10 schools versus 11? I mean, that's where we started. And now it's like, not only can we not operate, not 10, but we might actually have additional space needs at this point. So I just can't support repurposing one of our elementary schools for this. But, but it doesn't mean that I don't value the program. I'm the one who said, can we have a one-site ECC at one of our larger schools is my scenario, while keeping it also an elementary school back in December. That was my scenario. So the waterfall, back to that. Well, you know, me, I put it all in one big column and go for it all in one big year, but that's, you know, not realistic. We have two schools, and what I said at Capitol Planning today is we have two elementary schools that we know are not taking offline. We have kids and teachers in them every day. Everybody else has gotten something. And as far as I'm concerned, they need to get their something, something too. So Dwight and Jennings are both important to me. I'm not going to say that I'm supporting any type of an addition at this point at that, another one of those schools, knowing the costs and that we have a lot of other capital needs, because other schools need to get what they need as well. And things like brothers and reeds is, exciting need to happen as well. So that's where I'm at at this point. And it sounds like we are just not in the same place. And what, everyone on this board cares about kids, and has different perspectives. But I don't think that we, as a board, agree on where we're going to go. I don't hear a consensus. Yep, sorry. Mr. Peterson, yeah?
I, I really do appreciate the discussions going on around this table. I, I do. And I agree with you that I think, and I've said this many times, I think all nine of us are here for the right reason. And I certainly don't want to fight with anybody about it. I guess I would streamline this current discussion a little bit, because the way I see it, we're looking at two options. Either adopting an actionable plan to redistrict kids, or making an option that the state could reject that may not address racial balance. And I guess there are a lot of risks associated with, I, I would be very interested in an evolution of a magnet program, but the clock is ticking. And so I just, I don't personally see these risks as equivalent. I see a greater risk with kind of poking the state in the eye, and kind of taking, taking a chance that they're going to accept a magnet program or some, some other program that I think that they're not, it's not what they expect. They expect action in '24, '25. That's my, that's my take. But for me, with the extreme time crunch that we're under, like, those are the, those are the two sides of the coin. Either we do something which we have high confidence will address racial balance in the near or immediate term, or we cross our fingers. And that's where I am with that. Again, I'm not, I would love to have three or four years to work on this problem. That's kind of always what I imagined we would have, but we don't have that. And, and the question is, how willing are we to risk action from the state? I guess that's the, to me, that's the primary question before this board right now.
I think that actually, the reverse might be true. I think that they would prefer that we go with a voluntary option than a forced movement.
You were at the meeting. I only watched it online. My, my take was very much that they are tired of us not taking concrete action. And, and again, I'm not opposed to voluntary options, but isn't that largely what we've been doing for the past 15 years? That was, and that was a large theme of the May 2022 meeting. That, that was my takeaway. I'm, I can only speak for myself. I'm only one of nine. That's, I see it in that kind of dichotomy. Either we push back against what the state expects, or we do something that the state is hoping that we do.
Sorry, Mrs. Vitale.
Being that I was at that meeting, the state wants us to take action. I think their preference would be for us to solve racial imbalance in 2024. They also said, they are not telling us to redistrict anybody. They are not, right? They are not telling us, we're not telling you to redistrict anybody. So your plan, they would prefer that it be voluntary, that we build a community conversation about, talking about diversity, equity, making all 11 of our elementary schools welcoming. So if we did something like an opt-in or opt-out, people would actually opt out at McKinley on minority populations, because the opposite was happening. And the state board of ed heard from parents who said that they only feel safe having their children, their minority children at McKinley. So there's a lot of work that the state wanted us to do district-wide, from school climate to exploring the magnet to redistricting. We still have a lot of work to do on all those fronts. And I'm, I, I absolutely hear you guys with the magnet and that there is risk. And I wouldn't say that we're going to move full steam ahead without providing an update to the state board, saying, this is where we are and getting feedback. And as I mentioned earlier, we, you know, Mr. Asa and I, when this board really did not want to talk about redistricting at all, we tried to get other pathways. They suggested, I think it was Groton that did special programming in various schools, that got people to opt out to kind of better balance all their elementary schools. We, we knew the risk of the magnet, which is why we didn't put it first. We put a concurrent for having these conversations. I just bring it up just because I don't think that we really talked about it. And a few emails from the public, I don't think, without any real discussion, shouldn't be enough to drive the needle, like, we got some bad emails, people weren't interested, and that should, that should just, that should determine it. Because if we let emails alone, we, I mean, it would be impossible to make a decision. We wouldn't be able to do anything, because we're hearing from everybody, and everybody is just happy staying where they are. And, you know, it's, that's, that's kind of what, that's my recap of the meeting. I want us to, and I'm with you, I'm leaving this board in, in November. I would like us to have some sort of concrete action plan to know that we're not going to be, this, this board in this district is not going to be talking about this problem for another decade.
If I can just follow up very quickly on this, I, I hear everything you're saying. To simplify the way I'm thinking about it, if we adopt one of the SLAM scenarios, there's a very low chance of state intervention. If we do not opt for one of the SLAM scenarios, there is an increased chance for state intervention. And that's, that's the consequence that I'm hoping to avoid.
I mean, look, I think that it's just time that maybe the leadership or Mr. Asa and I, or whoever would like to come, has a, has a meeting with the state. And I certainly, I'm going to push to have, make that happen. I don't necessarily, I'm not trying to debate you, other than to say, I don't necessarily agree that, because the 10-4B means we're basically doing nothing. And I think it's been stated pretty clearly by Mr. Testani, that we have to do something. There's no doubt we have to do something. And kids will move in whatever that is. There's no doubt on that either. I don't necessarily believe that us trying to resolve this by bringing enhanced programming and enhanced options to students throughout the district would be something that they would take us to court on. Maybe after a couple of years, if it wasn't working. And I fully admit, my risk is, nobody opts in, we're back to this conversation in two years. And that is a risk, that is a risk. Because I would like to really resolve it and not have this hand lingering over our community. But I'm willing to take a chance on something. I'm at least willing to just continue having that discussion at this point. But yeah, Mr. Peterson.
I'll, I'll just add, and I'll, I'll leave it there, because I think a lot of it has been said. We've tried 15 years of voluntary options. And I, I'm just not convinced that another voluntary option with a, let's keep our fingers crossed and see in a couple of years, it's going to satisfy the state. But I'll leave it there.
Understood. Thank you. Mr. Asa?
Yeah, I just feel I need to touch on the point that was made by Mrs. Vitale, that the state board stated that they don't, they're not telling us to move kids. They're not telling us. The state board gave us a gutless, spineless comment in that, we're not telling you to do this. What the hell do they think we're going to do? And it's quite honestly, a joke to think that the state board has any more patience for us, based on the last couple of meetings with them, that anything they're saying is lip service. They don't care. They don't care how we do it, of course. They just want it done. And from where I sit here tonight, we don't have a plausible path forward. And I'm curious to Mrs. Jacobson's tabulation on what we're supposed to leave here tonight telling SLAM, because I didn't hear a majority of people that are on the same page. So does that leave us, as Mr. Peterson says, rolling the dice? Because that's where I get the sense of the body that we're at.
I mean, most people came in at, you know, continuing to work on improving some version of four, you know, a traditional round-the-horn, make-it-bitter, whatever it may be, and concurrently looking at proposal on a magnet. Mrs. Kelly, yes? Sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Asa, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, 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 that's fine. That's fine. So to the, I guess to the point, Mr. Zubba made it very clear that we need No, 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 that's fine. That's fine. So to the, I guess to the point, Mr. Zubba made it very clear that we need, he's expecting the board to give him direction on what the priorities are. So if it is still working with four, is your tabulation that the consensus is, the priority is racial imbalance?
Yeah, I don't think that's even really a question.
Okay. And just, my, I just, my comment on the magnet program, I am like Mrs. Jacobson. If there was an awesome IB program, I would love to send my kid to it. My niece and nephews in Greenwich went to their IB program. But I'd like to point out that to the point that I made about the state board, they just want you to do something and they want you taking actions. Greenwich has been taking actions for years and spending millions of dollars and still has not solved the problem. So I have no interest in taking shots in the dark. If we're going to do it, we need to do it, or we're going to roll the dice.
Mrs. Kelly?
I think we also have to ask ourselves honestly that 4C, or whatever we're going to call it, if we go back for another four, which I genuinely was hoping what would have been the 4B, but if 4C comes back and it's moving everyone around the horn, I'm sorry I keep using that phrase. But, and it's moving people, not in seven people blocks, but like, there's no group smaller than 50 people, like thousands of kids. Completely hypothetical. There's no, not going to be a street where only two kids are leaving and everybody else is staying. I don't get the sense that anybody here, that everybody here would be on board with that anyway. So I just feel like while I appreciate, and we all want to see what 4C looks like, it's not passing this table. And we're being honest with ourselves. It is not passing at this table. I don't think it is. I mean, prove me wrong. I don't know. But I just feel like, if this is the approach we're taking, and I'm not saying everybody's wishy-washy because I haven't been like, it's this or bust. Like, I'm willing to look at four as it is. I'm willing to look at 1A. But none, there is no consensus. We're not close to consensus. And I think the only thing we can actually marginally agree on is that if we're not going to find consensus, then we're going to roll the dice. So if we, if you're putting a gun to my head right now and telling me I have to make a decision of how we're going to move forward, then let's roll the dice. On the state, just, this is it. This is, we've, let's go to them and tell them, we've tried. This is all the work we've done. But to Mr. Testani's point, we can tell them, we have done a ton of work on this. And we honestly have nothing to show for it. Not one stinking thing. So get on you, because that's the conversation you're going to have to have with the state, and I will be watching from my computer. However.
Then with me.
But I just, I think we're kidding ourselves if we think 4C is going to come back and be some, it's never going to be perfect. I know it's never going to be perfect for everyone, but, and it kills me. It kills me to know that we all have worked very hard, all of us, on this four months. And I hate that we're going to have nothing to show for it. I hate that it's not going to fix our problem, but I think we're just wasting our time at this point. I really do. And I hate to say it, but I feel like we have wasted so much time already. Think if we all asked ourselves, ask ourselves, back when we were first presented, scenarios one through four, I'd be shocked if not at least three or four people at this table felt like we knew exactly where this was going.
Renzi?
Two things. One, I don't want to poke anyone in eyes or roll dice or any of that, but appreciate like that there's inherent risk in everything. And you know, this is, these are our decisions. I just also wanted to add, when we're talking about Greenwich, and I wish I had these details, but it's my understanding that they have been slowly moving the needle with their magnet program. So you know, this is why I'm encouraged by it. I think there's opportunities there. So I'm just going to keep bringing that up because I'm, I don't know what else to say. I want to roll dice.
All right. So we need to kind of wrap. Oh, sorry, Mrs. Max and Kelly.
Just two quick comments. Greenwich has very, very slowly moved the needle a bit. Meanwhile, they've picked up three, three more schools that are now impending racially imbalanced. So just as a data point, they're not fixing anything in that town. And that's, that's their hill to fight on. One thing, and I'll just throw this out there as a possibility, because I know in conversation with Mr. Testani, something that has often come up is that he's felt that if we, even with the redistricting, and to that point of exactly what percentage we'd be satisfied with for McKinley, that this could just begin to reassert itself as an issue, as people moved where they were comfortable. So I just point out to the board that even if we, if we do, if we do pursue a revised scenario four, that doesn't negate the idea of perhaps also pursuing the magnet as a way to future forestall ever getting back into imbalance. So I just throw that out there because again, I mean, I'm with Miss Math Academy. I'm all for that idea of appealing to different types of learners and catering to those different strengths in a way that a large district can. I'm all in favor of that. But I just point out that there is that possibility as well, that we still pursue that magnet idea. No matter what, people were being involuntarily moved, even if it was only the McKinley community. No one, we were not getting out of this without the involuntary movement of some children.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Mr. Testani a question. Mr. Testani, I know you gave the presentation on the magnet. But if the board did want to pursue that either as a slow phased-in solution or in conjunction with another solution, what would you need in terms of any direction? Or let's say we wanted to start it actually next year. At this point, what does that entail for you, for staff, for budget, or anything like that, knowing it would be a very small start?
So there has been discussions regardless of a magnet or just a themed school that I've had with some consultants. I, we didn't get into cost of what their fee would be. There would be some professional development with staff. But it, you know, it would also mean next year, moving kids out, opening a lottery process with an application sometime late fall, so that we can start to garner, to see how many applicants we can get, so that we can start to prepare the students that would be registering when kindergarten registration opens up from McKinley for the possibility of not attending McKinley and where else they would go. We'd have to decide that as well. There needs to be room in other schools.
So SLAM would still have to do something pertaining to that piece of it.
Correct. So to plan for the maximum number of non-M McKinley districted students in, that wouldn't be bad because they're coming from hopefully 10 other elementary schools. So very little impact there, but a lot of impact on the 40%. For example, so that would include, this year would have been approximately 19 or 20 kindergarteners that would have to go somewhere else to another school building or multiple school buildings.
All right. Anyone else have anything to say? Because I feel like we need to get some direction here.
Just one point of information as we do report back from the superintendent to the state. It is difficult to say we've, you know, I can chronologically narrate what we've done. I can't come to the conclusion to them that we're we're not in a good place or, because these are public meetings. These are all public documents. I can tell you from past experience, word gets around, and they're going to say at some point, you can't claim that there's not a solution because there are scenarios on our website that they can point to to say, there is a solution. You're just not choosing that path. So.
Can do satellite zones. You can do something else. Right, you could, right, there are means to address the issue. All right. So Mrs. Max and Kelly, do you want to give us an idea in terms of what you would be looking for in terms of four? Or anybody who said that they were interested in some sort of a revision on that?
Mrs. Vitale?
I want to go back to a little more discussion about the ECC because I don't, I mean, I thought this board should have had the discussion about the ECC back in December before we ever gave the charge, that we should have made that decision. Because I think that we do need to be thoughtful about the building that it is in. And while I do not support 1A, that does not mean that I don't want that program to be the best that it can be in two different locations and giving it the resources it needs and make sure that it's in the facility that it needs. So if we're talking about it being in Jennings, I need, I want to know what does that mean from a cap, from any sort of maintenance or capital planning over the next 10 months? Because we don't have any, we haven't planned for any sort of maintenance projects, capital projects. It's not on a waterfall. So that question I would want, if not right now, but I want that answered. If like, if moving forward with a version of four keeps the ECC classrooms at Jennings, what needs to be done to that space? And how much is it going to cost? Because we talk about equity, and right now we struggle with, you know, we have two, we have Jennings and Dwight that aren't, haven't been renovated, and we have, we have other schools, Osborne Hill, that's still waiting for the rest of a renovation. But the ECC space, you know, we have special dedicated space at Ward that was specially built for preschoolers. So when we're looking about a second location, I want to make sure that it is, the physical space is as close to the physical space that it could be at Ward, which is why we were looking at newer buildings.
Correct. I do think, and Rob and Kristen are here, I don't think two locations with one being Ward is going to be enough based on the projected increased enrollment next year from the new legislation. Forty-one extra kids are staying. So I don't know if that's going to be absorbed. I, I think we're in agreement, it won't be absorbed in the two locations, even if we keep that Stratfield right now and do nothing. We need a third location at some point because the kids staying behind are four going on five during this academic school year. Can't give them a half a day. I don't think that would be right. Because we're, they're basically kids that should have been in kindergarten and now are being pulled back. And so we're going to need space. We're going to need more space.
Go to kindergarten this year. It's next year.
The following year. So.
So it's not this year.
If we do a plan that doesn't allow us to grow anywhere the following year, we're stuck. We have to plan for that. Because if we're going to do maybe Holland Hill first, and we have to get Jennings ready for the following year, we need to know that.
I just thought you said that for next for 24, that we only needed two locations. That's, that's the only reason. And it sounded like in the last page of 4B, it was taking the ECC out of Holland Hill and leaving it at Jennings. So if we're seeing a version of four, it sounds like there's going to be ECC classrooms at Jennings next year. And if there are, I just want to know like what we need to do to that building to make it ready for those kids and how much it's going to cost. Because right now, we haven't budgeted for that. We haven't budgeted, I mean, it's going to be the following year's budget for a full day. Like, we haven't had a real robust discussion about what the future ECC program is going to look like. So that, that one little piece, just, if it's going to be at Jennings, what needs to be done and how much is it going to cost?
I think it would just be helpful to get some clarity, like, why Jennings? We have schools that have AC already. We have schools that are underutilized. Burr is underutilized. Stratfield is underutilized in this scenario. Like, why are we putting the ECC in a building without AC?
It doesn't need to be at Jennings. We had suggested Jennings to help with the utilization that was there. It could be anywhere. Pick a school. But there are schools with challenges, as Mike Zubba mentioned before. There are not a lot of ground level classrooms with bathrooms in some of these schools. And that was just construction that was done. Whenever the projects were done, they weren't, as Mrs. Gerber said, with Mill Hill, just decisions that were made. And now there's nothing you can do about it. Even with Holland Hill, we looked at it. There are still some challenges with some of the classrooms that do have bathrooms.
Yep.
Did you look at Burr in terms of bathrooms for preschool? Because that was another, years back when we looked at this rubric, Burr was another location, and we used to have preschool at Burr. And it actually, people, it was well received. Kids went there, and it actually helped racial imbalance. Kids, you know, opted in. So.
Your email indicated that. We're planning on going up to Burr tomorrow anyway, to really look at if it's feasible with the ground level floors, because I know there's not a lot of ground level floors according to conversations I've had with Angela. So.
It was there before.
I don't think in the number, the number of classrooms that, I don't think it was five rooms.
Understood. Senator McCasey?
I'm sorry. The ECC or the special education portion of preschool programming was not at Burr. Before we combined the two programs, the other program was at Burr.
It was preschool.
Correct.
Well, I'm just thinking pre-k, just in terms of classrooms. Now that we're not, we're just not separating them.
And at that time, when we last looked at this, I think in 2018, we stayed away from because it already had specialized programs. So.
The CLCs? Yeah. Okay. Where was I? Was there something else? The ECC? Anything else? Mrs. Vitale?
No, I'm sorry. And I'm sorry. I'm talking loud.
Okay. I'm going to go back. Oh, sorry, Mrs. Kelly. I'm getting tired.
Are we, are we asking or having this part of the conversation? Because when, if this Max and Kelly goes back and we ask for this other scenario, like, are we specifically giving them, we want the ECC in Burr and Jennings? Like, are these the directives we're kind of talking about? Like, are we adding more handcuffs? Or like, what's, you know, what's happening? Or are we saying, we want you to move everyone south of 95 and move everybody? Like, what kind of direct, is this, are we vague? Are we really coming in with specifics?
That's a conversation we need to have, because I said at the beginning of my, my portion, that we might not agree on what fixing four looks like. That's, are we getting to that level of grandeur point? And it's not going to go anywhere.
Right. So do we want to say, hey, we want a two-site ECC, and it needs to be in this school and this school? Is that, is that what we're doing now? Is this is what, is this what's happening?
You can do whatever you want.
I don't know where to put them. Okay? That's why we hired SLAM. But if this is the directive we're going with, like, if this is where we are, then let's do it. Is this, was this what we're deciding? We need a two-site ECC in this next scenario? Where are we playing them?
I believe they'll be able to tell us if we just tell them, pick the best two sites and then move kids accordingly.
Scenario four, we have three sites. There's three sites. It's Holland Hill, Jennings, and North Stratfield. So that is scenario four as it stands. Three, because we only allocated nine classrooms. So I don't know how we got up to 10, but it's three, three, and three at those three sites.
That was prior to the, I believe, the change in the kindergarten legislation in the entrance age. If we're going to be able to offer full-day programming for four-year-olds prior to going to kindergarten, and if we're going to be able to improve ratio, we're going to need more space. I would like to see wherever we can.
Does it not make sense that you would put them, obviously I know, there's all these conditions, so it's not as easy as where do you want them? Because you're, you can't put them wherever you want, like, if I might say, well, the Mall of McKinley. That school is very underutilized in many of these scenarios.
I think the priority has always been for the ECC to be able to have a facility, two or three sites that's similar to the facility at Ward, so we can offer, you know, the same program and services.
What do you mean by similar to the facility at Ward? What does that mean?
Ward.
Then to Ward, so.
Well, it, it has classrooms, it has the related service space for preschoolers, it's got the playground for preschoolers, it's got air conditioning, it's got, and there's no, there's not, there's not to say that we don't have space challenges at Ward now, like, for space, because we're growing. But all those kinds of spaces that we have at Ward, we would hope to have additional sites. Understanding there's challenges and that the ECC is just one part of this whole family called the Fairfield Public Schools. But that is, we'd like all our site, ECC sites, whether that's two or three, to, to be as similar as possible in the facilities. Bathrooms, AC, air conditioning, playground.
So what you're saying is, it's important to have them clustered?
Absolutely.
Not just the classrooms, but if possible, all of the services within a very close proximity?
Yes.
So clustered.
Clusted, we believe in clusters.
Well, we have a lot of buildings that have AC and those requirements. Right?
Yes.
So Riverfield, Holland Hill.
Yes, yes.
Stratfield.
Yes.
Any of those. I mean, I'm sorry, you know what, like, let's get a new playground then, I'm just saying, like, I mean, I, I'm not, you know, we can, we can do anything.
I'm not sitting up, not even saying I want that school, that school and that school, if that, if that's what you, we just want, we want similar sites.
Mrs. Max and Kelly.
Say, feel free to stay up at night because we are. But when you talk about, because having been in the ECC and had a child there, that's not interchangeable with an elementary school site. They have their own little gym, it's the cutest thing. I mean, those classrooms are not like the classroom sizes at our elementary schools. So we're not replicating what's there unless we're talking about construction. I, I just want to, I'm not saying that that is fact and I'm, again, I obviously suggested incorporating it possibly into the Jennings renovation. But only because I recognize that to actually get, replicate what you have at Ward, these are different classroom sites, there are the different types of offices, I'm just pointing that out.
That's why we say as close as possible, we know you, you guys have a tough job on your hands and there's a lot of other constraints.
So what site is the closest, the one that matches the most? What is that? Well, wait, that's what I'm saying, like, what's at, what school most closely nearest?
I think he said, they all work, Holland Hill works, North Stratfield works. We, we have to just say to SLAM, pick two sites and then make it, make it fit, they're going to move kids then, and then people are going to be upset.
Two sites or three sites?
Well, we're going to need two additional sites, one site initially to, to move them out of Stratfield and then the following year, another site. So, because there's going to be more kids that stay in pre-k, they're not going to kindergarten.
So McKinley is Stratfield. Right?
I, I'm not going to, school, I mean, i- it's.
I'm going for, I'm knowing where schools are being underutilized, so like Burr has a ton of space, like with naturally not have highly dense populations, which would be Burr, but Dwight doesn't have AC, Riverfield?
Riverfield, we currently have our, a specialized program there.
Yeah, but.
Riverfield is a fine building.
TLC can move, right?
We could do anything that we're told to do, I mean, really. I will tell you, TLC has found a home at Riverfield.
But you know what, other kids have found homes where they are too, so, right, I mean, we're talking about what are the options here?
Tell us all the options and we will deliver great programming for you.
Holland Hill has space, but yeah, Mrs. Vitale.
Mr. Mancusi, I know that we're putting you on the spot here, but I would rather put you on the spot and I trust you more to identify the building. You know our space, you know our kids, to say, this is where I think the best place for the ECC is. And I say that and I, I know your answer is, as, you know, the director of special education, you're going to say that we should repurpose Jennings and renovate that school to be a one-side ECC, let's just humor me, let's take that aside. I trust you more than, not, nothing against SLAM, but they are, they have one, they're not special educators. So we're asking you just for your professional opinion on knowing our space, knowing our staff, knowing our kids, what buildings you think we should be looking at for our early childhood programming? But you don't have to answer.
Yeah, thank you.
As a quick follow-up, I, I do care, because one thing that this board had started to react against a bit, and maybe now we're seeing that that's a reaction understandable at the time, but now we can't afford. We had said repeatedly, we do not want neighborhood communities to be displaced for specialized programming. And it was an argument I, I hadn't thought of and I thought, that does make a lot of sense, put the, put the programs where there's the space, but that doesn't mean it's the right school, so just as a reminder, as we push Mr. Mancusi to give us an answer, or at least, whatever it is, understand that that may come with something that we had previously criticized and asked to move against. So say, for example, that they did have to put it, say they picked ten classrooms at Osborne Hill, but that was the recommendation of sped, are we willing to say, we recognize that is going to displace three hundred kids? I, I'm, so I'll, that is a hypothetical because we're not talking about putting ten in one place. But that was something we'd been reacting against just two meetings ago, which is, which prompted administration to respond to our request, and now we're challenging that. So I, I do think that in, on the, in the theme of we need to give clear direction, and I, I think everything has come with the best of intentions. I think it was, it was a fair point to say, why are we displacing somebody when we could just put it in an emptier place? Then we put it in an emptier place, but that's not having the result we want. We do have to pick, and so I'm just pointing that out.
Mrs. Vitale.
I mean, that was a loaded question, but I knew that some of the spaces had had capacity, so had air conditioning, because we had done that, we'd done the work already. So I, I was setting him up, but I also knew that he had, he could have answered at a school that would have been a viable option.
Two thousand and nineteen, we did pass scenario three and four in terms of five and five in one location and two, two and two, you know, and multiple sites. Like, we have done that before, where we said, put five here, put five there, put two here, put two here, put two here. I mean, it's not something we haven't done before, for us to decide where they go.
And at this point, now I'm, where did we say we would put five?
Oh, God. It's the twenty-twenty scenario three.
North Stratfield and Holland Hill.
North Stratfield and Holland Hill.
We are still.
And, you know, Ward.
And Ward.
Because at that time, it was before the boom in North Stratfield. We toured all the schools, there was a rubric, we had the focus groups, and that's where we, that's where we were. So I'm, you know, when I'm, it's based on the fact that we have done this work, or some of us have done this work and had these conversations.
And it was like, two at Holland Hill, two at North Stratfield, and maybe keeping a couple at Stratfield, I can't remember exactly, but it was more like a three site.
We didn't have anything at Stratfield because of, there was concerns about just access to the playground. At that time, I think services were on, the kids were on the first floor, the main entrance, they were going up to the second floor for services, that they were losing, you know, half hour, you have half hour for speech and you're spending ten minutes getting to speech and getting back from speech. Well, that's, that's significant over the course of a year. So that's why I think that we started looking at, it wasn't necessarily the best place from a program perspective. To refresh everyone's memory again, Dr. Jones put it at Stratfield at that point, not because I don't think that it was deemed the best space for ECC, but it was to, for racial imbalance. She took it, we took it out of Burr, we put it in Stratfield, hoping that more kids would attend to ECC at Stratfield and then opt in. And that didn't happen. And then once we realized that the kids weren't opting into Stratfield, we said, okay, let's take another look at it, we have to do this redistricting. Let's go tour all the schools, let's have a rubric of what we want this space to have. And we gave SLAM a charge back in whatever year it was, two thousand and nineteen, that listed the schools that we thought the ECC would be in, based on our work and the recommendations of staff. So asking now to, you know, giving direction now is not something that we haven't discussed before.
If this conversation hasn't taught us that we are never coming to consensus, then I don't know what will.
I mean, Mr. Mancusi can't answer because there's no answer. We have tried, based on what we've gotten from everyone at the table, that's why we went out to Jennings, we went to Holland Hill. We walked the buildings, we looked at the possibilities. But we only can, the suggestion only ends up satisfying one or two people. And then two other people are upset, and then we try to satisfy that, and then two, those are.
I wasn't expecting him to answer.
I also want to make sure, guys, I also want to make sure we get time for public comment, there's been a lot of people waiting to, to comment. I mean, in summary, I just don't think we have direction here. We don't. So.
If, if unanimous, if being unanimous is a worthy goal that has long since passed.
Yeah, right.
Working with four seemed to be the majority.
I think it wasn't the majority, but it was the most with the magnet. Yes, it was. No, four fours. Four, okay, but thank you, but no, we don't take that from the audience, it was four fours. Okay, well, I can too, and it's four fours. Sorry, Mrs. Max and Kelly.
That's okay, first of all, I actually did not keep account, so I thought that there was five, so again, happy to be wrong, but I was trying to help, I did think it had five. Take a look at it, so.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Mrs. Max and Kelly.
I meant to interject this earlier in the conversation, it really didn't seem to have a point. I am happy to work with four, I just have very low confidence that we're going to get an actionable solution out of it that is going to generate. If, if, if four people want to go forward with four, and I can add to that and make it five, I'm, I'm happy to do that. I just have low confidence that that's going to be a long-term solution.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mrs. Max and Kelly, sorry.
That's okay. I think one thing that will help is a very important direction regarding the CC, regarding the ECC, is will this board accept neighborhood displacement or to go into the best possible location that works for racial imbalance as well? Because if not, then Mr. Tesani gave SLAM good direction, which was in the selection of Jennings. But if we are willing now, having gone through this, and I'm not saying I know the answer, but I do think the ECC is very important. I now understand why we're choosing the number five and why we shouldn't be putting two here, two there and two there. That would be irresponsible programming, that would be an irresponsible educational decision for serving children. I get the five now. Then that's what we have to look at, which means we have a choice and that is a definite, that's at least one definitive direction we could give. I am not happy with displacing neighborhood kids. However, I think keeping this clustered as a five is enough of a priority that I would accept in a school. Happy to be argued out of it, just as, as a starting point.
Just want to clarify, for this newly revised issue, we're only going to, we're not going to do the nine ECC classrooms in this scenario, we're only going to do five. Is that correct?
But in addition to the ten that we currently have. It would be fifteen if we were going to do three clusters of five.
Okay, we passed nine, so I don't, how are we getting to fifteen? Oh, okay, alright, so. So four that we currently have plus six.
We currently have six at Ward.
Ward. Get Ward, I only want to talk about elementary schools. We have four at Stratfield, we're adding, well, we approved five more, you're asking for six more.
Yes. But, but that, we keep Ward.
Yes, we keep Ward. Elementary.
Sorry to confuse you.
Ten classrooms in elementary schools for ECC, and you would like them clustered in five and five? Because Mr. Tesani just said we would just, if we did a new scenario, we could just do five. So that's not the case then.
And we would phase in the third year, that's what we would do, we would do a phase-in plan.
But that means you're phasing in the redistricting then? Well, what's the point of phasing it in then, if you're just going to have to move people, you're not going to move people twice?
Does the phase-in mean the idea that we're holding those classrooms, but that doesn't mean we're filling them yet? But this way to do the redistricting just once?
For us to be able to offer ECC programming without being back here in a year or two, we would like three sites with five classrooms each, plus obviously the other spaces that you would need. Just a site, excuse me, it would be Ward plus two elementary schools. I don't mean to.
Thank you.
Upset you, I'm sorry.
You're not upsetting me, it's confusing, right?
Ward plus two elementary.
Not on Ward.
Sorry, I'm on Ward as our third site, so that's why I'm fixating.
Alright, so Mrs. Max and Kelly asked a question, who would like to answer it? The question is, are you okay displacing children to place the five ECC?
I, I would say the fact that I'm at this table talking about redistricting, I'm okay with displacing children, I, 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 I don't, yes. I, I think we have to look at it and see what, what it comes back with. So going back to four, with the priority of racial imbalance and the secondary being the special programming in classrooms, then that's it. Yes, I would like to see that. I too was a little confused about the five now, five later, so now it's clear that we, we need to do it all now.
Yeah, exactly. I've already expressed, I'll just go next, if you don't mind, I'm just going to jump in because it doesn't seem like there's a lot of hands up there. Way back in June, I expressed concern about high-volume clustering in some schools and then having some schools that are not carrying any of our programming whatsoever. And I still have deep concerns about that. It's not about ECC or anything else, it's just about how we are, we're all looking at our district, so. And that, I believe that schools should be all participating in this process. So for me, the high clustering isn't that I don't understand what you're saying in terms of its value and from terms of that. What I see though is we're creating high-needs and low-needs buildings, and that is a concern for me. So while I would cluster to the degree that we had before, two, three, I am uncomfortable with going. So while I would cluster to the degree that we had before, two, three, I am uncomfortable with going three in one building. That's just me personally, and I'm just being honest and explaining why that is. So I've answered your question, Mrs. Max and Kelly, would anyone else like to answer? I'm sorry.
I just ask a quick follow-up. So with regard to the, to the, the idea of, of the 10 classrooms, are, are you saying that if we gave you in a scenario hypothetically, you had five in, in one elementary? Are you saying that within, within a year, so the 25, 26 school year, you wouldn't, you would need to start filling those additional five classrooms at another site? Or if you got five classrooms in a scenario now, and a few years later, a building project yielded another six, five, six classrooms as part of the building renovation? Would you be able to do that or is that too long?
We believe, sitting here today, that when we plan for next year, when this new legislation kicks in, if we're going to be able to offer full day programming for four-year-olds going to, that are not going to kindergarten, but to prepare them for kindergarten and to try to, you know, work on that 50/50 student ratio, we're going to need space. And, and if we're going to cap it at eight and eight, so we're looking at, at sixteen, which is not a low number. Some preschools cap it at 12, 14, we thought 16 was a reasonable number, eight and eight. But if we're going to be able to offer four-year-olds full day programming across, you know, sites, we're going to need space.
Okay, but just to get back, I'm sorry to push you on this. You say we need space, we're talking about five classrooms. So increasing from the one that we currently have at Stratfield, how much time will that buy us? If we gave you, if we took away Stratfield and gave you five somewhere else in the pie in the sky location, how much time will that buy us?
So I understand the question, because I want to understand the question before I answer it. When you say, give us five at Stratfield, that's five at Stratfield?
No. Five total in addition to Ward, forget Stratfield, wherever it is, five total in addition to the current Ward, how much time will we, will that allow us before we need to start adding additional classrooms?
We would, if we just had five classes at, in addition to Ward, we currently have four, we're going to be filled to capacity really fast. We know already, we already know that at least 41 kids who would have been kindergarten eligible are not going to be kindergarten eligible.
Okay, so it sounds to me like we can't wait on a building project then? Because that's going to be, that's going to take years, even if we've moved it up. So, so, okay, so we definitely need the 10. Okay, thank you.
I'm really sorry, Mrs. Max and Kelly, but I need to be respectful of the public chair, make sure we get to public comments. So we have some other business items to attend to, so I don't know what you guys want to do, but I'd like to move on. On this agenda. No, I understand, I just don't think we have any direction in terms of what we're doing. But I, four is what we want to do, we just don't have an agreement on how we're going to do it.
Well, I, I don't see how we leave here without an agreement on whether we're giving them direction or not.
I mean, I mean, I agree with you, Mr. Isa, but we don't have direction.
So what does that mean?
It means we don't have a direction.
So we're pausing SLAM? And then what?
I mean, I just don't hear from people what they're going to do for four. I'm asking, we're asking people, questions are being asked, they're not giving directions. So I've, I said what I, how I felt, so have you, but it would be helpful if other people would also express what they're looking for. I think we also expressed what we were looking for, our opinions.
And four.
And a new four.
I think what she's saying is if there's five people for four, can we talk about?
Where we're putting the ECC.
Like what's, what's the priority? Like what's the priority and?
I am not, I'm not committing to put the ECC in Jennings until I find out what needs to be done to that space and how much it's going to cost. I don't mean to sound like a broken record on this, but we did work on this, we spent a lot of time touring buildings, Jennings was not on the list and now it is. So right now, I need that question answered and I've asked it numerous times. I don't mean to be difficult about this, and I agree with Ms. Kelly in terms of not feeling like we're getting anywhere. When we first got those scenarios back in June, I kind of felt the same way, which is why I said, should we be talking about a magnet? Because that could be a path that maybe if we spend some time talking about that, it might be a scenario that we could get some consensus about.
Well, I mean, Mr. Papa George is here, can we get some information on what it would take to open up five ECC classrooms at Jennings?
Except, Mr. Jacobson, it's my understanding is that the only reason Jennings is being talked about was because administration was trying to be responsive to us, to put it in, so that, that the point being, again, which I appreciate hearing, because I think we wanted to know, how did Jennings come about when we've done the prior work with the rubric? Now we're hearing why, it was an attempt to be responsive to us. So if that is taken off the table, that opens it to stop to put it someplace else, in which case Jennings isn't the issue anymore.
Thank you, it's off the table for me then, okay. We were handcuffing you anyway with that, that was not the intention.
Thank you.
And in terms of placement, even though I've expressed concern around the high volume, I would be looking for the lowest utilized buildings to utilize that meet their appropriate. So I'd be looking at like a Burr, McKinley. I'm just looking at the numbers for scenario and Stratfield, but it seems like people don't because Stratfield is very underutilized in this scenario. So I would take maybe those two CLCs out of Strat, out of Burr, with the ECC there and put the CLCs at Stratfield or something like that. But I'm just looking at what actually has space in order to avoid as much as what you're saying of the displacement of neighborhood kids. Where would it fit the most in terms of that have the underutilization right now? Knowing that there would still be people that would have to move. But I would want to limit that as much as humanly possible by using the buildings that are our lowest right now. That's just my philosophy.
No, I, I agree, like if, I just haven't heard an official from the district that five classrooms will work at Burr with the front exit and having enough, whatever it is that they need. That's all, I just, we haven't heard that definitively yet, but it's my understanding you're touring it tomorrow with this in mind, so.
I apologize, I do not have Burr in front of me. However, I can tell you that with first grade and kindergarten classrooms on the first floor, you're very limited with the number of spaces you will still have without displacing a lot of children to make room for five classrooms there. You're very limited with the number of classrooms on the first floor at Burr. So that's why we never went up and looked at it, but we will be happy to go up tomorrow and take a look at space up at Burr. I can go back to McKinley for a minute. So the design at McKinley, the kindergarten and first grade classrooms are designed with an open concept. So there's no barrier between hallway and classrooms, which makes it a very loud area for preschool programming. So that's why we kind of didn't really look at McKinley when we looked at it. We, when we went to Jennings, we looked at Jennings. Jennings has some space available. There's a, there's space available. There is an air conditioning issue there that we would have to address to make it air conditioned building. As for utilization inside the bathrooms, there are 10 classrooms on the west wing that have current bathrooms in them. They are floor mounted and not wall mounted toilets. So it would just be a swap out of fixtures to make it a usable for pre-K versus a kindergarten classroom right now. The millwork for the sinks in the classrooms are low enough for kindergarten, preschool usage. So that's one of the reasons we kind of stuck at looking at Jennings more because of the utilization, what's there? What's there facilities wise, what would need to be done to make it work for the program that they were looking for?
I just have a question though. But we've already said we don't want a two-section elementary school and that's what happens if you put it at Jennings. So isn't Jennings just like off the table? Yeah, okay, all right, so does it work in Holland Hill?
Holland Hill has.
I'd basically looking for like what are actually the options at this point? Do any of our buildings work?
Holland Hill has nine classrooms with bathrooms within the classroom, one of which is being utilized right now as an art room. So we'd have to figure out moving an art room around, which has a separate kiln room off of it. So now we're talking about moving a kiln, electrical, ductwork. So leaving the kiln gives us eight classrooms with bathrooms in there. So you, Mrs. Jacobson.
Eight, so you only need five.
I mean, we need five, three for kindergarten, that pushes first grade into use spaces without bathrooms within the, in the classroom.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm going to simplify this, Mr. Papa George, what schools actually fit five pre-K classrooms?
Hold on, Mrs. Jacobson, I just have a follow-up. When Mike is running elementary school, none of the first grade classrooms had bathrooms. It's, it's a kindergarten issue. So if the kindergarten classroom has the bathroom, that's what we, that's the goal. It's not kindergarten, kindergarten first grade we want on the first floor, but it's only the kindergarten classrooms that need the bathrooms. So once again, you're saying Holland Hill has how many classrooms with bathrooms?
Nine, take away the art room, so eight.
We, so, so that means that would be five, plus right now they are a three-section kindergarten school.
Yes, yes, so it would work at Holland Hill?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Isa.
Just, just a quick follow-up, McKinley. With regard to the, let's just ask the question, I know you said the open concept and everything, but how many classrooms on the first floor there have bathrooms?
I don't have it in front of me unfortunately. I was trying to pull up the floor plans as we were talking, because the open concept idea, to me, it's easy to build walls.
They're non-bearing. So we, we, in theory, that would, could be a relatively minor thing if the bathrooms were in place.
Yes.
Mr. Isa, four. We phoned, we phoned a friend in the audience that said there are four bathrooms.
So would, would, does, does the phone a friend know if the walls were built so like in other schools, the bathrooms were shared between classrooms? Or is that not doable?
They're individual in the, inside each classroom.
Okay, so it's not like it could be a Jack and Jill type thing?
So four classrooms have bathrooms in them? I don't, I'd have to confirm that and you're looking for five?
Okay.
No, can we just, can we just do that and move on? Yes. All right, so now we just need the second site.
Well, actually, I take that, but we don't, in that, if there's agreement to move ahead with section four, with scenario four, then we are telling staff, find it. You know, we, we don't have, I mean, I'm glad that we've resolved that Holland Hill is a, is an extremely viable option tonight, but we don't actually have to, we need accurate information. If we don't have it, we don't need to know that, but we know that we're looking at five classrooms where they have enough relateded classrooms to cover kindergarten and five sections of ECC.
And, and. So, so also to Mrs. Max and Kelly's point, if we have the five now at Holland Hill, in theory, when you're looking at the schools and trying to identify them, you know, situation like Jennings where they have the four mount toilets and stuff, we can be looking at that at other schools too, to see what a retrofit. So just because they don't have them today, you could be talking about a retrofit and then coming to us, decide to go down that path with what the costs would be.
All right, let's get into another criteria. How high are we going to? Mr. Isa has said low twenties as his cutoff. Is anyone uncomfortable 21%? Anyone uncomfortable, oh, okay, well, okay, nine, eight, one. Anyone uncomfortable with 22%? Twenty-three? Me, yes, yeah. Okay, so we want, okay, does anyone, does a majority of the board expect lower than 20%? Okay, so 20 is basically, that's it. We're not, we don't want to break 20, right? I mean, is that the end of the day? Break 20%? I mean, that's what I would say, I mean, 20.4, 25, I mean, yeah, right? Go ahead, Mrs. Gerber.
When you said eight, did you, which direction are you breaking? Oh, yeah, no, I, I'd like to, I mean, 20 would be, I, I mean, again, with the understanding that the lower the number gets, theoretically, the longer we'll have to go before a future board will have to deal with this.
And also the lower the number goes, the more people you're probably likely to be moving too, so. There's a direct correlation there, right?
Can we do the straw poll and start with, is anybody comfortable going over 20%? And then is anybody comfortable going over 20? Can we do it that way?
Yeah, that, is that, sorry.
So can we take a, take a sense of the body, is anyone, raise their hand, comfortable going over 20%?
I mean, a bit.
I just want to point out that you're, then immediately the school is labeled impending. And that is a label that communicates something to realtors, to buyers, to families, and that's a reality. So that, I just want to explain why mathematically I'm comfortable with 20, but in terms of the work we have before us, I want the 19.9.
Yeah, below 20. No, I, I agree, that we would, it would be great, we're just saying we're not foreclosing something if it was a wee bit higher.
So can I ask if anybody's willing to go over 21% other than me? Okay, thank you.
Okay, we've got our R.I. number, we've got at least one placement for preschool.
20% racial imbalance, primary goal?
Twenty, below 21, below 21. I don't know about the primary goal, but. I guess, yeah, right, yeah.
I mean, just, sorry, can I just interject? I mean, I don't think we'd be here right now at 12:20 in the morning if it wasn't for the racial imbalance, right? I mean.
I just want to make sure that that's publicly stated, so if SLAM has any questions, they can know that that is the priority of what we're coming out of tonight.
That had always been my understanding in this whole process, is that, well, at least my personal, I know that there are some board members who talked about wanting to redistrict and I understand the idea of the facilities utilization being important. But to me, the primary driver in this, to me, is the racial imbalance.
We're also going to say contingent zones. We don't want any non-contingent zones, correct? I don't, correct, okay. We've got that. Eleven schools are remaining open, correct? And as far as the TLCs and CLCs and ELAs, I'd say, you know, after you figure out the other stuff, figure out that. Yeah, go ahead.
And to the point of the placement of those, once again, I understand clustering the three ELA, because those staff are all working together with another. But in all fairness, the, and I know what we'd like, and I'm sensitive that these are, you know, high needs learners, but do we have to pair CLCs?
What I would say to that is there is great, great value in having CLC teachers to have a partner. It's a very different special education instruction that teachers provide to CLC students. It's, it's more specialized and it, there is great benefit to having a partner in doing that. So they can share students, they can partner with each other and they can work together on behalf of their students.
Thank you.
Obviously, this is going to be probably for later after we get the scenario back, Mr. Isa, but for me, obviously, it's going to need to fit within the number of classrooms that our buildings have. So we're going to need to get down to the section, whether it's us or them or somebody, with our EdSpec rooms and any programming there and any other purposes that are being used as fit.
I would, this is not going to be part of a criteria, but I want to throw out there, I think Mr. Peterson mentioned it in another meeting, in the projections on the one-off year, you know. I know we've tried to avoid them, rightfully so, but if a portable had to come in one or two times, and it gets, it checks off all these other boxes, that's not a hard no for me. It's not, yeah.
I'm not going to, I think we've had some, yeah, I think we've had some discussions on portables in a different context, but yeah. All right, Mr. Esa, can you read out what you have so we can confirm?
So I have, our direction to SLAM is to work with scenario four, with the primary issue to get below twenty-one percent, hopefully twenty or below, on racial imbalance. Select the five plus five ECC classrooms. Contiguous zones, all eleven schools stay open. Does it fit the criteria, like, does it fit the actual classroom inventory? And then placing of the special programming with the preference being what Mr. McQusy has stated tonight.
I'm sorry, you did the five plus five classrooms, but one being Holland Hill?
Yeah, the other TBD.
Everyone cool? Mrs., sorry, I know, you don't even want to say it anymore, sorry. No, I, it's, what? They do want to say. It's okay. I always want to say.
It's late, so I just apologize for somebody having to walk me through this. What is different between this, other than being a little more specific on the Holland Hill thing, versus what directive he had before? Where, is it because we're specifically not even mentioning walkers and minimal impact? Like, I, I just don't know what, because he basically sat at this table and told us, I can't get you what you want. And now we're saying, okay, but now we want it, what this?
But can I, can I comment on that?
I think, yeah, but I think what's different is we're saying that the prior, we've prioritized now. So the twenty percent racial imbalance is his goal, and everything else here is preferred.
Walkers, more walkers might be put on buses.
But also, I mean, the first line of the slideshow for scenario four B was, ECC program located at Jennings and Holland Hill at the direction of FPS administrators. It was determined that Jennings and Holland Hill. So that is a change. And that was a direction given to them because of reaction to us. So that, that I assume is a significant change.
And Mr. Testani, what did you gauge? If, if we do this, what Mike Zubo was asking tonight, we're not looking at, because they've already done some of this preliminary work. So we're not looking at a month to get a scenario back. We're looking at a quicker turnaround, and then we can come back to the table and say, okay, once and for all, this is something that we can go down, or we're rolling the dice?
Well, it sounded like he'll tell you if it works pretty quickly. All the other projections and that will take more time. But if it works, that's a thumbs up, and then he can do all the rest, but.
Well, we have the twelfth and the twenty-sixth, those are our two meetings. And you know what, the tenth is supposed to be a first read.
And the other thing off the table is the utilization is not being prioritized, so that could.
No, but it's fitting within the number of classrooms that each building is.
Correct.
Like, can't need twenty-four classrooms in a twenty-one classroom school, can't need thirty, et cetera. So let's talk timeline, Mr. Testani. And the board. We have September, well, September fifth is our community conversation. September twelfth is our next board event meeting, and then September twenty-sixth. So we only have two meetings. So. Do you think it is possible that we may have this back for the twelfth?
We will find out tomorrow, again, by midday.
Maybe we need some more meetings, I'm guessing. So I'm just going to say calendars through October. We might need more some time. Mr. Peterson?
Very quickly, I'm, I'm happy to see this process through to the bitter end, but I don't think this late-night lightning round is going to change anything. While Representative Leaper is in the audience, I think that we also need to put the word out that we may need some help at the state level when crunch time comes. Just leave it there.
Mr. Papa George?
One point of order.
Sorry.
Can we consider moving these items to a future meeting so that we can take time for public comment and fit it into our agreed-upon schedule?
Absolutely. The only thing is that I do, this is a two-second thing. The first read of deletion of policy six one four, I think we can handle that, right? Anybody have any, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, did you want to intro it? And then we'll just move on so that we can actually vote on it next time?
Yep, very quickly, we, Ms. Jacobson pointed out that our high school course load policy was inconsistent with our program of studies, which prompted us to look at it. Staff came back with the point that it's not even a necessary policy. Much discussion ensued. This was one of the few policies that comes out of policy on a two-one vote. But it's ultimately not needed, and our program, we were, the two of us were willing to defer to the program of studies and our head principals. And please get me any other questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Approval, I can't even do the minutes, right? Approval of the minutes, recommended motion of the Board of Education approve the following minutes, June twenty-seven, July twenty, July twenty-four, July twenty-seven. Mr. Peterson, second amendment, Mrs. Kelly. I'm in favor. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, Mr. Testani, do you have anything really quickly on these? Or do you want to just, you know, it's the first day of school, so let's say something about that.
Not that anybody's still listening, but it was great to welcome everyone back today. I do want to acknowledge one young man at Tomlinson Middle School today. His name is Lucas, and I don't know, apparently, he is a very astute young man. He walked right up to me, stuck his hand out, said, Mr. Testani, great to meet you. I hope you have a great school day and a great year, and he walked away. So he has become, I, I love him. He's a great young man. Apparently, he watches a lot of board meetings too. So I doubt he's watching now, but he seems to be very astute on what's happening in the district. We do have some busing things that we were working out, no different than last year, but still not to the level that we budgeted. The scoreboard at Ludlow High School will be powered up fully by Thursday. Today's Tuesday, Thursday. Next week, they're flying out, the gentleman, our company's sending their folks out, two days of training and firing it up, and it'll be fully operational. So it'll be done. And Dr. Danishevsky has submitted a high-dosage tutoring grant. It's a competitive grant for all grade six through nine math student, and it prioritizes districts who have received smaller allotments of our bester money. So we're hopeful on that. Again, the restorative practice training, all admins did. We were given feedback from Riasap, who did perform the training, that it was the most engaged and best training group they had ever worked with, and they've worked with a lot. So that was kudos to our administrative team. And that's it for now, so thank you.
To Papa George, I'll put you on for September twelfth, is that okay? Thank you.
Just one quick question, just as an acknowledgement to our families. Can you tell us which school, because I don't know the answer to this, which schools are most impacted by the busing situation?
Not quite sure yet. We did have an issue, unfortunately, with the early literacy academy students this afternoon. Bus driver called out, and, which impacted the pickup by an hour this afternoon. So we apologize for that.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Just for open public comment, just want to remind the public, we are having our community conversation where you can engage back and forth with the board, September fifth, next Tuesday, at the Fairfield Local High School Auditorium. It will be recorded and livestreamed. Pardon me? Yes, starting at seven thirty. All right, I'm going to go to public comment. If anyone would like to come forward, I mean, you guys have been here for a while.
Happy Wednesday. Brian Pierce, three thirty-eight Old Oaks. He spoke with, you heard from my neighbor earlier. I'm going to start very microscopic, and I'm glad I listened and waited for the end because we covered ninety-nine percent of what I wrote down. Specifically for the Old Oaks and Greater Brooklawn area, the, the map specific to four B, which I gather was unanimously not preferred. It makes me question whether or not SLAM has an accurate map. You guys have been here a lot longer than I have. There used to be a road named Rinwick Drive connecting Algonquin to Melville Avenue that doesn't exist anymore. So if you look at the map now, basically, Algonquin all the way to the end of Old Oaks is our neighborhood, and four B would have severed us right from everybody else. So maybe it's an action item to SLAM, check your maps. I, I don't know how you guys define contiguous, but I would not define that as contiguous. Sure, as bird flies, but again, you're taking a handful of us and removing us from our community. So would appreciate some follow-up with Mr. Zubo on that. All right, now, just some notes. You're looking for feedback from parents with kids that aren't even in kindergarten yet? Here I am. I'm a blessed father of two daughters under three. I would love to send my kids to a magnet school that's quality. If it's a bad magnet school, no, I'm not going to commit to you right here. But yeah, I'm in, I realize that complicates things. And we're talking about four, we're, you know, I want to, let's rewind three, four hours ago. You know, four makes sense to me too, as, as a layperson, but what Ms. Vitale has shown, he's going to come back with four C, right? Which is what you guys saw, or the diagram you were handing, is what he's going to come back with you with. So consider that. Doesn't sound like you guys liked it five, six years ago. And then two other things that are more rhetorical. But what does state intervention and/or action actually look like? And simply, can we not just ask for an attention?
Sorry, time's time, but thank you. Thank you very much.
Hi, Laura Veneman, one oh six Blue Ridge Road. Thank you all for the work that you've been doing here. I certainly recognize how hard it is to align on this charge. I'm highly disappointed to hear the magnets being put back on the table as a solution to racial imbalance. This is a town issue, and I would hope we would all work together to fix this imbalance. Why would we gamble on a magnet school to fix a racial imbalance? As Ms. Chrissy Kelly kindly reminded, McKinley is an elementary school that we know and love as it is today, will be phased out. My daughter, who will be in kindergarten next year, will not be able to attend McKinley unless she attends at the magnet school, which I do not have any intention to send her to. As a reminder, McKinley currently has two classes that are being used as an early literacy academy. I'm honestly confused why one of the smaller schools like Jennings is even being considered for an ECC. If the early literacy academy could be moved, it's only three more special programming classrooms that would need to be added to work for an ECC area. While I understand there might be some space constraints, which we've heard about today, I do think it is worth relooking at McKinley. And unlike a magnet school, it would be a guarantee to fill those classrooms, unlike the magnet. I hope we can join together on this task as a community to fix what I believe is a town-wide issue. Thank you.
Alyssa Kent, one eighty-six White Oak Road. Couple things, voluntary movement. So we've talked a lot about different options for it. I would love to see the numbers run on what the demographics were of the math academy. What would happen if you added a second grade to that, and you put that at McKinley School, in addition to some other specialty programs, whether it's ELA or something else? It's a program that we know was successful. It's, in my opinion, been wildly unsuccessful at the neighborhood schools. I had a fifth grader last year that was brought up to twenty-seven kids in her math class because we had math academy kids joining her fifth-grade classroom. So from a personal perspective, that was wildly unsuccessful for her fifth-grade math experience. Outside of that, I still, I'm a broken record here. I think every time I've come up to talk, I've said that sister schools should be revisited. I think it's a very simple concept. Potentially, you could add an ECC to them, as some, if you sister two larger schools, and potentially does not make anyone involuntarily move. Just combines communities. We can be creative, we can do it how we want to see it. It's atypical to not have them on one campus, but we have a lot, we have a lot of bad options here. So that's one that I still think should be pursued. Outside of that discussion, a couple of things. The school climate survey. A lot of the schools that are up for consideration on scenario after scenario have really low morale amongst teachers. What's going to happen when we throw all sorts of new high-needs students at them when, you know, we, we throw them into redistricting? And the last thing is, I just continue to be disappointed that we don't see more of our town administration planning and zoning or affordable housing committee at these meetings. I have made public comment at some of their meetings with almost no response.
Sorry, thank you.
Hello, David Krosnov, one fifty-five Burr Street. Wow, that was a long meeting, and I have tons of comments. So instead of just saying everything, I'm going to try to just make a few statements. One, to rewind to what SLAM said. They said they can't do a traditional redistricting with the current space we had. So what are we doing running another scenario? We're just going to come back and be here, the exact same place we are, in about a month. And what's option B? I really want to know what option B is, because it looks like that's probably not going to work out. I am shocked when A came back up. Again, we don't have enough space. Why are we talking about closing a school? Again and again, closing a school comes up. It is not a solution. And I know it's repurposing a school, but again, not a solution. It will cause overcrowding, and we may end up in portables, which I know I'm not okay with, and I know other people on the board have said they're not okay with. Jen, I want to thank you for your comments about capital planning. It's really nice to see that Dwight and Jennings were actually mentioned and not put, you know, eight to ten years down the road, so thank you for that. I also want to add that SLAM mentioned better long-term planning. I really wished some long-term planning would have been a little bit more of the conversation tonight. I feel like we spent about an hour and a half on ECC placement. That's not necessarily long-term planning. We could have found a place for the ECC, possibly at the Jennings or Dwight that is proposed down the road. Lastly, I do have a one-year-old. If we did have an IB program, I would definitely think of attending it. Thank you.
Hi there, Katie Flynn, two oh four Grand V Road. So I think, similar to you, out of sheer frustration, I spent most of the last week reading about every racial imbalance law that I could find across the country, which, just so you guys know, there aren't many. Connecticut's one of, I think, two states that even implements these kind of laws. So I said, okay, let's dig into how many communities are affected by this. And it's really three. Four, if you include Groton, which has come in and out, but mainly West Hartford, Greenwich, and Fairfield. And while I very much appreciate Mrs. Max and Cannelly's point that not all aspects have been effective in every capacity, I wonder if we've done enough work collaborative to see the proportions that have. So just now, when I heard Holland Hill get brought up again, and McKinley, I thought to myself, it's interesting, that's our one impending school and our one out-of-balance school. And when I read Greenwich's plan, they say that they only compare like schools. And when I read Greenwich's plan, they say that they only compare like schools. Our ECC needs a full-day pre-K. If we were to expand those programatics to those two schools plus our ward site, would they then be like comparable? Would they still... Would that resolve our racial imbalance? When we talk about exploring a... I also don't love the term magnet school. I think specialized programming can be such a wide array from our ELA, math academy, IB, insert the one of your choice. It can range. And do we have students that would go to it? Well, I just read the state report, and we currently have, well, in 2020, 21, 16 students who leave Fairfield to attend the six-to-six school in Bridgeport. And I know that because I watched the update that Tony Jones gave at the April meeting of the Greenwich Board of Education. So I'm not saying that we need to follow exactly what other people are following, but to not explore the other two districts in our state. And they have used voluntary movement. So I would just encourage, and I will keep asking these questions on September 5th. Thank you.
Jennifer Leeper, 75 Sherman Court, for the record. It's lovely to see you all. Thank you so much for your time and commitment and the civility of what is an incredibly difficult conversation. I know it's really late, so I won't be long. Just to say, I am always here and happy to help however I can at the state level. I haven't heard from any board members about how I can be helpful in this process, so please come to me, and I will be more than happy to partner. And I normally don't make a habit of speaking for my delegation members, but I'm assured the same is true for all of them. So we are here.
Elizabeth Cook, 298 Duck Farm Road. I want to say thank you to all the board members here and those who have responded to my emails in the past. I just wanted to say, as my phone closed on me, I'm going to try to remember what I want to say. So I'm about 200 feet from the Riverfield property and less than a third of a mile from the actual gate of how we walk to school. I don't think having walkers no longer be walkers is an option just because of the bus situation, the fiasco. We had a temporary bus last year because of a road closure, and even that took our kids less than a third of a mile from the school, over an hour to get to school. So just adding that layer of complexity really makes it an issue. The other thing I want to point out, I don't know if it was ever thought of, like, renting or working with a daycare program of, like, having a daycare facility that had, you know, open rooms to kind of use as a temporary solution for ECC until other schools got fixed. I'm not sure of how that works. That's just something that I thought of quickly. I didn't grow up in Connecticut originally, but I've been here for 10 years. I went to a school, a specialized high school in New York City, where we had to have a test to get in. And that was really, you know, a great option. And I do... I know that Connecticut doesn't really have that. We have magnet schools. So I think if we see something like that, that might be interesting. I really don't know the details about magnet schools, but going to a school that we had to have a test to get in, it was very competitive. It drew a lot of attention throughout all of New York City to get into those schools. And the last thing I did want to say is that I know there's a lot of schools that need renovation, and I, you know, not necessarily the school we attend right now. And I'm hoping that those schools get that attention. Those families pay the same amount of taxes as we all do, and I hope they get the attention as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Katie Romeo, 237 Greenfield Streets. First of all, I really appreciate all that you've done. I really do. Thank you. I know this is not easy. Based on this meeting, I really don't know what to comment on particularly, but I feel like I need to at least say that. I don't know how I feel about all of this, but I know that our school has felt this heavy weight for so long that fear and unrest has become the norm at McKinley. So I really do appreciate you trying to push forward and make a decision because I think we need that weight lifted. I know I've said this before, but McKinley is awesome. Our community is beautifully embracing of our diversity. We love it. We also understand that this needs to be changed. We understand that we will be redistricted. We are preparing for it the best we can. But in this process, I just need for all of you to have in the forefront of your mind that this is a Fairfield issue, not a McKinley issue. And the constant language that we are hearing is directed towards McKinley, but it's really not us that's imbalanced. It's everyone else. So thank you again. Thank you.
Last call. You can't come up more than once. I'm so sorry. You can talk to us after. You want to hang out and go have some coffee in the morning? Might as well get some breakfast. All right, so that is it. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn, please. Mrs. Kelly, seconded by Mr. Peterson, all in favor? It passes unanimously 8-0. Thank you.